Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for an accessory dwelling special permit on thirty-seven Otis Road. We have the applicant. Why don't you sit at the, sit at the table? Tell us what you'd like to do. Just so you'll know that, uh, we, all the members have, are current in terms of being able to vote on the, this application.
Okay.
So, uh, we put a, um, two-car garage. We had a one-car, kind of dilapidated garage on our property. And we expanded it to a two-car garage, um, with, uh, storage space or an apartment above it. And, um, our family just expanded, so we wanted to make it an apartment.
Accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I assume that, we had an application originally that came in from, they had Kundig's name on it, but the drawings, drawings that were provided with that application are applicable to what you're looking to do?
Uh, the drawings are just for what we have now. We haven't, um, gotten any drawings for the dwelling above.
We do have a plan.
We have a plan.
It shows the garage.
It shows a floor plan.
Well, it shows the garage down bo, on the first floor, obviously, and then it shows the second floor as a living area, bedroom, two bedrooms, a kitchen, and a bathroom.
Oh, okay. Alright.
More efficient than you anticipated.
Your architect has moved ahead of you.
Now, the, uh, so the envelope of the building is not going to change, is that right? And you're just going to build out
Right.
inside the existing space?
Existing, yes.
And I think the, the question might be, Laura, that, what's the exact square footage?
Yeah, I had a little trouble reconciling the numbers. I think we, I emailed you and I don't think I ever heard anything back. I don't know if you got my email or not.
Oh.
I had your email. I did have your email.
Oh. Oh.
But, um, anyhow, the, um, plan said that the area was, uh, the house was, I think it's on the application.
Twenty-four eighty, I think.
Twenty-four eighty?
Yeah.
And the house on the, uh, field card for the assessor actually says, um, sixteen hundred twenty-two. So, I don't know if maybe whoever put the application together, I think it was Herb, maybe he added on the accessory dwelling and that's how he came up with that number?
That'd be my guess, because I think it's about eight hundred square feet.
And our house was sixteen hundred, yeah.
Footprint. So, maybe he was counting the upstairs and the downstairs as sixteen hundred total square feet? The garage and the upstairs?
Okay, well, it looks like the house hasn't changed since the field card was done and that was sixteen hundred twenty-two. So, the point of all that is that the maximum size for the accessory could be seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Oh, I see.
Um, because otherwise the forty percent, I think, is six hundred something, you know, four-
Less, less than that, yeah.
Four hundred plus, it's, it's less than that. So, with a seven hundred and fifty square feet, um, I was having a little trouble with the numbers on that also. On the application, it said seven thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
But when I started measuring, I don't know if anybody else measured this besides me.
Do.
Um, when I started measuring, I came up around, um, let's see, it's twenty-six plus seven is, um, thirty-three by, uh, what is that dimension there?
Twenty? No.
Which one?
Twenty plus.
The crosswise one.
Yeah.
I can't read.
It's twenty plus, I think it's about six or seven.
Yeah, it is.
And then you chop out an area where the, um, where the stairs and the deck up on the stairs are.
Yes.
Um,
Yeah, but there's-
But I think it came really tight to, um, it's, I think it was a little bit over seven fifty.
If you scale it.
Oh, really?
I'm just looking for the numbers.
Five to eight?
Five eight.
I can't read.
Yeah, fourteen something and five eight to be twenty.
Instead of fourteen, instead of nineteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's probably another five or six feet.
Heck, let me give you these, because this is what was submitted with the application.
Yeah, if you haven't seen it, you really should see it.
Yeah, I think you definitely should see it.
This is twenty-six and seven.
Okay, right, 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 but then you gotta chunk, chunk that out, yeah.
Which is seven by
Seven by five.
Five thirty-five.
Take it, that was named back in the sixties.
Yes.
What did we say?
Bring mine in, that's, that's really handy, because I never have a paper when I need it.
By, it'd be eight twenty-five.
Yeah.
It's eight twenty-five minus, so it's eight hundred. You get about eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Seven ninety?
Eight hundred. It's, it's close, but I think something needs to be, um, um, you know, sort of allocated to storage or some, or cut out somehow architecturally or something, so you really wind up with seven hundred and fifty square feet of floor space.
Oh, okay, so...
If that's, if this is, this is built, though, I mean, the shell is built, the surrounding outside wall.
It's already there, yeah.
This whole thing is built, is it?
Yeah.
The shell, yes.
Just the shell.
Yeah.
So, the way to carve something out might be to make a piece of that a storage area that doesn't pertain to the dwelling, but, but has a door, for instance, out to the deck, where the stair comes out. You know, it sounds like-
For outdoor furniture or something.
It wouldn't, yeah, for outdoor furniture or a barbecue grill or whatever. I mean, I can't see another easy way to do it.
Now, how did you come up with the, um, eight hundred square feet? I'm just curious.
Well, just looking at it real quickly.
I was gonna carve it out.
I mean-
I went through a lot of-
But that's not-
Numbers, but anyway.
It's probably not gonna be enough.
Look at, um, this is twenty-six and I believe-
No, no, go back to the floor plan. I'm assuming that deck is built.
Thirty-three by twenty would give you this here.
It is built.
Yeah.
And then this part, I believe, is about six by twenty-six.
Right, that's the vertical wall, right?
I think six is kind of, um, conservative, you know, in favor of the applicant.
Right, so if I put a door on that wall.
Uh-huh.
So-
Well, I guess what I was saying-
Six plus one fifty-six, I come up with, um, like eight sixteen.
I mean, remember none of this stuff.
But I mean, typically what we do is do the inside measurements.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, if we did the interior rooms.
So, so, if we did the rooms, you'd have the walls, and so in fact, I don't know if that would be enough to be fifty square feet or not, but-
Doesn't make a lot of sense, but-
I actually, I calculated the difference with the, and it came up something like that.
I don't know if there's any other way to do it. And meet the law.
Well, if we're foot thick, it would work. It was not realistic.
Oh. Okay, okay, yeah, alright.
So-
So, I guess, let's bring it all back to one meeting. But I guess we're saying is that, based on the drawings that we've got, it looks like it's oversized.
Next door, or maybe the existing dwelling?
It's not by a tremendous amount and I think-
I think that's the existing dwelling, maybe.
It's fixable.
Maybe it's next door, so-
So, you guys have any more comments?
Up in sulks.
I don't understand, uh, what are we fixing? We're, we're not, we're, we're leaving part of the upstairs as storage? Is that what you're saying? You make it a closet instead of living space?
A closet that you'd access from the outside, so it wouldn't be actually part of the apartment. Because the apartment is a little too big
Oh.
for the size house that you have.
Oh, I see.
It's just a little too big, though.
Is it because it's bigger than our house?
No, it's because the, the regulations say that you can either have a certain percentage of the total area of your house as a secondary dwelling.
Okay.
Which is forty percent, Laura?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or seven hundred and fifty square feet, whichever is larger.
Oh.
So, seven hundred, in your case, seven hundred and fifty square feet is, is larger.
Right.
But that would be your maximum living area
Right.
in the dwelling unit.
I see.
So, we have to carve out maybe fifty square feet. I know it doesn't make a lot of sense. And it's not going to be very useful for you.
Yeah.
But considering it's already built.
Right.
Fifty square feet of that has to be dedicated to something other than the living, the interior living space, exactly.
Okay, I see.
Would, would we be willing to, to measure from the inside, though, in terms of sort of use, usable square footage to reduce the, the waste that we're talking about here imposing upon them?
Well, I mean, ask your-
It's inside all the way.
Yeah, Laura had said that she actually calculated that.
Is, is, is it the inside? Because we were, Steve and I were looking at the exterior dimensions, the overall dimensions. I mean, it does, it does take off about six inches all the way around, which, you know, amounts to a few square feet.
I, I don't think that's defined, um, but I, I may be wrong, but-
I think it's defined as living space.
Yeah, okay.
Well, they talk about the total square footage of the floor area, so I guess you could, you could look at it as just the-
Inside the walls.
Side.
Yeah.
The other thing you could look at, and it's a little more involved than I was going to be able to do, but you could get with the building inspector and find out, with habitable space, what counts.
Oh.
For instance, if you're, if you've got eaves there, which I think you do.
Yeah, if it's, if it's below seven foot two, it doesn't count as habitable space.
And then if it's an eve, and, you know, it's under five feet, it doesn't, it's very complicated and it was definitely
Okay.
more complicated than I could figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I've never heard of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ralph, Ralph could probably help you.
You can talk to him and find out what really counts as habitable space.
Okay.
Are you, are you still working with your architect?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Because he would probably be the person to advise you best, but if you're not, then yeah, the building inspector's a good, good resource.
Okay.
I mean, and I, I don't think anybody's trying to, you know, squelch, squelch this idea in any way, shape, or form. I think we all approve of it. It's a, it's a pretty charming little, uh, little piece of architecture.
Right.
But the, uh, the laws, the, the regulations are the regulations.
Right, so what would we do? We would talk to the building inspector about this and get him to tell us-
He could go over and maybe just check out all the eaves.
What, what we have, and then-
I think he could just tell you
Yeah, he could probably look at the-
what the law is.
Yeah.
And, and I think you do the measurements yourself, or you get some other designer to do it for you, and to put it on a piece of paper, so you can see it and understand it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, you know, the planning board can, if they vote to do it, they can continue the public hearing, so you can, you know, come back and-
We would come back with the materials and, and then-
Yeah, to do this again. Come in, you know, ahead of time to us in the office.
Oh, okay.
A week ahead of the meeting, and then that'll give, you know, a lot of time to look at it.
Oh, good, okay. Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Great.
Alright, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Because I think that, that makes a certain amount of sense.
Okay. Great.
Are there any other, any other concerns while they're in the process of, of looking at it?
I think that's it, unless the board has any other concerns. I mean, it's really, you know, you guys are the ones thinking about it.
Is it subordinate to the, the main structure?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's already an existing building.
Yeah.
Well, in that, in that, in that it's a garage.
Technically, they're not real similar.
I would say the dwelling unit portion of it is small enough to be subordinate, and the rest of it is a garage, so, you know, you have a garage.
And, and we're not, we're not building any new structures, we're just building inside an existing structure.
But you built a garage?
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Right.
Because the garage exists and therefore this is above the garage, and therefore it would be subordinate?
Now, it'd be subordinate to the main house, right?
I think that's what I'm, where I'm coming from.
Okay.
That the part that we're talking about is subordinate to the main structure.
Okay.
The garage is out of the equation since it up pre-existed.
What about the impact on the neighborhood?
I drove by, I thought it was a positive impact on the neighborhood, truthfully.
I didn't drive by it. The picture looks like it's pretty-
I, I don't think there's going to be any additional burden, because, like as I said, the structure's already there. And it replaced the one-car garage?
Yes.
Yeah.
A ram, rambling, rambling one-car garage?
I think it was used for lobster's traps, more than parking cars.
Yeah.
About cars.
Is, did, is there a building permit for this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that whole thing was done by the book, so to speak.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, is the way it's measured.
So, I think that is inside, that is inside the walls.
I think it's inside, yeah.
In fact, you could even, you could even deduct the, uh, interior partitions.
The, yeah, the, and, I, I agree.
Because I think on the other ones, when they came to us with the plan, it was always we added up the rooms, or they had it all added up for us, what the square footage was.
Yeah, and I'm not sure anything was so close that we had to start thinking about whether it was inside the walls or outside the walls.
So, you, you, you want fat walls in the interior?
Fur, fur out the walls another six inches or so, put some more insulation.
So, the only concern, let me ask this, so the only concern that I'm hearing from the board is, is coming back up and fitting it within the dimensional requirements. Is that true? Yeah.
Yeah, and did, are there any egress regulations in there, just the fact of-
Not, not in the accessory dwellings, they, they'd be in the, uh, in the building program.
No, there's the egress requirement for accessory dwellings.
Yep.
But I don't think you need two means, right?
That's why I was wondering.
Do you?
You need two.
Well, you've got a, I mean, the entrance, but then obviously you've got a, the windows.
This has to, though, right?
Well, they both go down to the, go to, go to the deck and down the ladder. That's what I, that's what I was thinking about, right? Or down the, down the stairs.
Yeah, that's what they do.
So, it's two out of the building, but just one off the deck, which I think, I think-
That's acceptable under Mass Code, I think.
Yeah, right, that's what we've approved before.
You can have a common staircase.
Yeah, as long as you're outside. Yep.
There's one there and one there.
Yeah.
I don't have any issues.
Eric?
I'm good.
Bob?
I'm okay.
Bob, Steven?
Alright.
It's good. Okay. So, it looks like you gotta go back and get your dimensional requirements.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Have a little sketch as to what this thing's gonna look like and how you got, how you got your math. So, you work with Neil.
Okay.
Yeah.
Once you've got that, come in and work with Laura.
Mm-hmm.
And then you'll come back to us on-
That's what I was just gonna, um, ask about. Do you have a feeling for how long this might take you to do?
It depends on Neil, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming, I don't know, should we come back in a month, or? Would that be fine?
Yeah, you could. Um, a month would be about, uh, let's see, it'd be like the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth is chuck-a-buck four, will be chuck-a-buck four.
Yeah, twenty-sixth is full. I mean, either the fourteenth, or we're gonna have to push it to December.
I think, yeah, it'll probably have to be December fifth.
December fifth?
Yeah.
That sounds cool.
Yeah, that's-
I, I think it's safe.
Yeah, I mean-
In case Neil takes a bit to get over that.
Yep, yep.
Be very busy.
So, I was thinking about seven thirty for this, because we don't have-
No.
Oh, oh, you've already advertised twenty thirty?
Oh, no, I did advertise that, but, right, so I could, yeah, we could do this with seven thirty.
Okay. Okay, so seven thirty on December fifth.
I need a motion to continue. So, moved?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright. See you in December.
Thanks.
Let me give you this, too. This is the rest of your application.
Oh, okay. Great, thanks.
This is in case you had seen it before.
Okay.
Does that have the-
Does that have the plans?
Does it have the plan and elevations?
That the plans were included.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I split the information up, so they have to share.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Don't take my goats.
Yes.
They'll take care of your poison ivy.
Mr. Welch, does, um, if you have a, is it your business?
No, no, I'm-
Oh, it's not, it's yours, if I look up.
Yeah. I'm the superintendent of Black Rock, and we have goats that eat our poison ivy and our, all our briars and-
Wow. Can I borrow them?
Karen, you know, that's interesting, I was reading an article recently about, uh, barrier dunes that were being erected, I believe, in, uh, South Carolina. And they had specifically planted them with poison ivy to keep people off of them, so that the dunes didn't get walked away.
And let me guess, they were overrun by goats?
I, I don't know. Just thinking, that, that would defeat the purpose of the poison ivy, of the dune.
Indeed.
Who gets that job? Go out there and plant all this poison ivy?
I don't want to know. You saw me a couple about a month ago, you saw my run in with poison ivy.
I wouldn't mind having one just run up my draw, my driveway for a week. They would take care of that.
It's like, uh, it's like the, uh-
You've got that in the application, so you-
Oh, okay.
You got everything now that was submitted in your name.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Just so you know.
Rent the use of their hives and truck them about. Okay, so we have five minutes until our public hearing. Do we have minutes?
I, yeah, to our meeting.
Yep.
I want to know which record is being reduced to knitting tonight.
Which what?
I said I want to know which, which names are being reduced to knitting tonight. I've read the Tale of Two Cities.
This is Curtis Street.
So, hopefully, I think, and I know Karen sent these out, uh, so you have a chance to review them. I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board meeting minutes for September twelfth, twenty thirteen, and the planning board minutes for September twenty-six, twenty thirteen.
So, moved?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will sign those. Got a whole bunch. Maybe. I move that we, uh, approve one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents for reimbursement to Laura Harbottle for mileage, uh, for the Worcester Planning Conference.
And a whole bunch of other things.
Oh. Oh, yeah, because, well, it was, yeah, it was mileage, major, uh, planning conference, fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents, site visits for elevation grant, thirty dollars. So, the total-
As long as people know that it's-
The total came to one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. And, well, you know, let me do all of them. And thirty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents for a desk organizer, uh, and calendar book for the planning board office. And, wow, nine thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the engineering peer review by Bills and Thomas for two fourteen clap road, flexible open space subdivision. And the applicant deposited, uh, I guess dollars or deposit in PB guarantee. Okay, for this review. So, that's the, I think that's the, yeah, so it's really Bills and Thomas review.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Two minutes. What else can we conclude in our two minutes?
Plan and report.
No.
No, we'll hold on to the town plan and report.
Do you mind this for the doctor to come up?
Two?
I'd be delighted if he came up. As long as you kept a barrier between us.
Three.
Motion maker like to do the, the reading?
Yeah, somebody should-
Second verse, chapter three?
Yeah. That's great.
I don't think they need to even see my-
So, there are the meeting minutes. Okay.
Three signatures?
Yep.
So, it's now eight o'clock. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for proposed zoning article to extend the village overlay district to include properties on the south side of the Driftway shown on the plan entitled Exhibit One, prepared by CHA dated August twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, identified on the Town of Situate Assessors map as parcel ID fifty-three dash five dash thirty-two dash O dash R, parcel ID fifty-three dash five dash thirty-two dash A dash R, parcel ID fifty-three dash five dash thirty-two B R, parcel ID fifty-three dash three B, oh, dash O dash R, parcel ID fifty-three dash three dash six dash O dash R, and parcel ID fifty-three dash three dash ten F dash R, parcel fifty-three dash three dash nine, dash zero D R, dash R, and parcel ID fifty-three dash three dash four dash zero dash R. I think we're required to read the public hearing announcement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Notice is hereby given pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty A, Section five, that a public hearing will be held by the Situate Planning Board on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, at eight P M. in the Selectman's Hearing Room, Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Massachusetts, to consider an amendment to the Situate zoning map as described below. This amendment will appear as an article on the warrant for the special town meeting commencing November fourth, two thousand and thirteen. Amend the zoning map to extend the village business overlay zoning district. To amend the zoning map by amending the zoning district shown as the village business overlay district to include the additional parcels shown on the plan entitled Exhibit One, prepared by CHA dated August twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, and identified on the Sit, Town of Situate Assessors map as- I don't know, do you want me to go through all those same parcels again? It's the same parcels you just read.
Okay. As long as they've been identified.
Well. The text of the current zoning bylaw, the current zoning map, the text of the proposed amendment to the zoning map, and the plan referenced above illustrating the map changes are available for inspection during the normal hours of business of the Situate Town Hall at the offices of the Town Clerk and the Planning Board, Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Massachusetts. Any person wishing to comment on this proposed amendment to the zoning board, the zoning map, should appear at the public hearing at the time and place designated above. Written comments on the proposed amendment will also be accepted by the Planning Board prior to the public hearing. William Limbacher, Chairman, Situate Planning Board.
Thank you. Now, I think we've got all the legal requirements out of the way. Mr. Brodsky, why don't you introduce yourself and give us the background, and then talk to about what you're proposing.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky, and I represent the proponent of this citizen's petition, which is South Shore Auto Parts, and with me is Paul Donovan, who is one of the owners. South Shore owns two of the eight parcels that are subject to this proposed zoning article. And I do have a copy of the petition with the color copy of the zoning map change. Would you gentlemen like to have copies of this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. The second page is the color copy of the zoning map.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just enough. The proposed zoning change, the zoning map, to extend the village business overlay district that's presently located on the other side of Green Bush to the south side of New Driftway. And the planning board may remember that this is not necessarily a, a novel concept. Back in two thousand and six, when the original article was proposed, um, after it was proposed, and during discussions, there was some discussion at that point about extending the village overlay district to the new Driftway. For what I can tell from the minutes of the meeting, it was just decided that, since this is such a new concept, um, being proposed for Situate Harbor, North Situate, and Green Bush, that they, they didn't want to bite off too much, and so it was decided not to have that discussion be part of the original article. And over the years, it's been discussed, I believe, at several times with the planning board. But it, uh, it, from our client's perspective, it's, it's, it's time to bring the issue forward. The eight parcels, uh, that are subject to the proposed article, and I, and I have, well, we've tried to, this might be more helpful, I have a copy of an aerial photograph with the various properties identified, and so this may be a little bit easier to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, essentially going from east to west, we have the parcel property with the medical building, and then going to the west, we have the two parcels of property that are owned by South Shore Auto Parts, uh, where you see the South Shore Auto Parts, uh, store. Beneath, or, excuse me, behind that, towards the marsh, you have the Rousseau property. Then continuing westerly, uh, you've got the, the Dunkin' Donuts property. Behind that, the property owned by Mr. Drew, and then the property further to the west, where we call it the, the shopping mall, the small strip mall, is located. And those are the eight parcels that are subject to the proposed change. And those are the eight parcels that are subject to the proposed change. And we took some care to identify which parcels we thought were appropriate because we candidly thought that those, several of those parcels are presently underutilized and provided the best opportunity for redevelopment, potentially for mixed business use. We didn't think that we needed to extend further to the east, we've got James Landing that, we already have residential there. Didn't think we'd go further to the west, you've got the Riverway. We did have some discussions with Laura about whether we would include some properties on the north side of New Driftway, particularly the MBTA property, and then the Citrate Concrete property. Candidly, those posed some unique problems, and it was more than we could handle. Trying to create a dialogue with the MBTA about future development of the parcel was just beyond our capabilities. And then as you go further closer to the Stockbridge Road properties, then you're now involving some of the residential properties. So we tried to focus on those properties where we thought we'd have the greatest likelihood of seeing development and where you really had some underutilized properties. You know, these properties are advantageous for mixed use, given their proximity to the T and the Green Bush line. And that, one of the purposes of the bylaw when it was adopted, the principal purpose of the bylaw when it was adopted, were to create these village-type districts as part of a smart growth initiative. And if you can locate these villages near public transportation, you're really accomplishing everything. You're developing these villages with residential use, you're also creating business opportunities, creating dedicated little village settings. So you've got, you're actually creating a market for expanding your business base. And that was the motivation behind doing this. This is, I guess, a unique opportunity in that this is also really a gateway to Situate Harbor. So as you imagine, you're coming off of the Rotary, you know, New Driftway is one of the major ways to get to Situate Harbor. You have a medical building on the right, a medical building on the left. Now we have a new restaurant on the left-hand side. And then you start to get into the area that we're talking about. It's, you know, you look at some of the properties, particularly our property, perhaps the Rousseau property, the Drew property, I mean, these are really underutilized and really afford us an opportunity to do something really aesthetically pleasing and really create a very welcoming gateway, inviting people to come into Citrate. And so you're all familiar with what that area looks like, I do have some photographs. But what we did is, and we have no project planned, and I've tried to make this clear to the various. We're not proposing a particular project, we're just trying to create, you know, the ability to do some projects in the future. But we did ask a designer to take a look at our property and to use her imagination as to, you know, what could you conceptually do? To give you a sense of creating this kind of village, village development, and also being a gateway into Citrate. And again, this is just a conceptual rendering of what you could theoretically do with our property, as just an example. So this is actually forty-eight and fifty-two, a new Driftway. Here's the view of the current property with the South Shore Auto Parts building here. A little bit underwhelming to take a look at, but you could conceptually, if we were a successful town meeting, to extend the village business overlay district to this portion of Citrate, you could have mixed-use development. So what that would entail would be retail on the first floor, residential on the second floor, subject, of course, to all of the requirements of your special permit process. And this is just a conceptual idea of what you could theoretically create if we're able to convince town meeting to change the zoning, you know, attractive landscaping, incorporation of the bicycle path into the development. And again, by, you know, creating some new residential use there, it creates a new market for additional retail there. And of course, you've got the crosswalk, literally a walk across the street to get to the railroad station. So anyway, this is, this is a vision of what you could do. And I think what was really intended under the bylaw. We've done a rudimentary economic analysis of the benefits of this kind of development. In fact, we did a presentation to the Economic Development Committee here in Citrate, and they, they were very favorable, thought that this made a lot of sense from their perspective, and voted to support the article. Again, by creating additional retail there, we're broadening the business base, increasing the business base because, for example, a building like this, you could have multiple retail units, you know, presently at South Shore Auto, we have the main, the main portion of the building is retail auto, we do have a small space that is leased out. But, you know, again, you have the ability to create a number of different units. We took a look at property taxes, and again, I'm just going to give you some examples from our property. Our property generates approximately eleven thousand dollars a year in property taxes. You know, make some very conservative assumptions. We think that you could redevelop our property and have more than eight times as much additional tax revenue, property tax revenue. Recalculate, you know, at least eighty thousand dollars in tax revenue. For our model, and we just used some of the sort of as of, not as of right, but sort of the minimum requirements in the bylaw, sixteen residential units, the roughly sixteen hundred thirty square feet, which each unit would generate approximately four thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars in additional tax revenue. So for the residential component of a project like this, you could generate at least sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars in taxes. That size building could maintain four retail units of approximately three thousand square feet. Those units would also generate thirty-five hundred dollars in property tax revenue or additional fourteen thousand. So again, you could take a property that's generating eleven thousand dollars now in property taxes and, you know, very conservatively generate more than eighty thousand dollars in additional revenues. We have presented this concept to the Selectmen and to the Advisory Committee, I think we've got representatives here this evening. We generally received favorable comments from both bodies, but they both deferred to this board. And, you know, said, listen, come back to us after you speak to the planning board, you folks are the expert in zoning matters. And so we're asking this board for a favorable recommendation, which we'd like to then be able to take back to both the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee. We're happy to answer any questions, but this is what we're trying to accomplish with the zoning map change.
Okay, good, thank you. Let's, what we'll do is we'll have Laura give us her comments, questions in the board, and then we'll open up and have questions in the public.
Just a little bit of history about the village business district that, you know, might be useful to everybody. It was developed with a consultant that the planning board hired back in 2005. We got some grant money to do that. The reason that they were hired was because, at the time, the train hadn't quite come in, and there was a lot of concern about what was going to happen to especially Green Bush and North Situate when the train stations were there. Was there going to be a big development boom? Would there all of a sudden be a lot of demand for people to live in these areas? And how was that going to be accommodated? And also the fact that Situate really doesn't have much of what you could call affordable housing, and whether there was a way to work that into this, this idea. And the outcome was this village business overlay district. It called for mixed use with retail on the first floor, apartments or condos up above. The density for the condos was between sixteen and twenty units per acre. Just to give you a feeling for that, I think the Mill Wharf may be a little bit higher than that. I know the Harperside Village comes out to actually, I think it's about fifty-five units per acre because that's, it's got a lot of very small units in there. But you look at that big building, and I think it's, you know, you don't really know how many units there are, but that's, that's where that comes out. So this would not be as dense as that building is. There were some design criteria that were part of it, most of which had to do with having the building close to the street to make it more easy for people to walk and to give pedestrians something to look at in store windows and make it easy for, you know, people living there to come and go also, I think. And with the parking behind, it's kind of a new sort of smart growth style. It never became what you have that's available. It's actually a program that the state has, which is the 40R program, where you can actually get revenue when new units are created. The density is very similar to this, the process would have to be different from a special permit, it would have to be more of a by right process. But, you know, there's money out there, and I have checked that money is still available, and it seems, you know, like it's really too bad, well, we need money so badly that we can't quite make things work to, you know, to kind of get into that. Anyway, not to get too far off the track, that's the village business district. The planning board had a couple of proposals early on, they didn't wind up getting to fruition. We have just this week, actually, we'll be talking about it a little bit later, we have Fifty Country Way is back in, and it's a thirty-unit mixed use. And when the consultants were looking at, at the three villages, at the Green Bush, North Situate, and Situate Harbor villages, they didn't have a hard time with Situate Harbor and North Situate. Those were fairly easy to see where the boundaries would be and, you know, where the district would be. Green Bush was kind of a conundrum to them, they couldn't quite get their mind around Green Bush. And to me, I think that this location for the mixed use is really, really kind of would put everything else in perspective because this really seems to be where you do want to have the commercial center for that village. On Country Way, maybe isn't really the right place. I mean, these are just my thoughts, and, you know, you, I'm sure have your own thoughts about it. But Country Way seems like it's a little bit sleepier, it's right near the reservoir, you can really only have development on one side of the street, you don't get a lot of traffic volume. You get the traffic volume here, you're close to the train, you have water views maybe out the back. I mean, it seems like a really good location for something like this. I could see the possibility of some tweaks to the village business district so that some of it you might want to have strictly residential and other parts mixed use, like possibly some of the back part of Green Bush, you know, maybe that really shouldn't be a place where there's retail because there's really never going to be retail there anyway. So those are just some general ideas. But the other things that are going on right now is that the Economic Development Committee has a market study that they're doing, and the draft should be available within weeks, but we don't have it yet. And it's supposed to address this area and other ways to increase the businesses in an understandable way in, you know, different nodes, so you don't have, you know, business everywhere, which, you know, you certainly don't want. But that report isn't, isn't really available yet, it hasn't been produced yet. So it's a little, I think it's a little frustrating, you know, not for, you know, maybe anyone else but a planner, but that we have done a lot of work, we're, you know, just about at the point where we're going to have something that's a real analysis of where additional business districts should go, and we get a proposal that, you know, it looks like it's really, they're really driving to get it right into this town meeting. It could be that it goes to town meeting, it comes out the other side, everything's fine, everything works out, you know, that, that's a possibility. On the other hand, you need the two-thirds vote at town meeting, it's not just a simple majority, so it's a little trickier sometimes to get the vote. And just from the standpoint of planning well, it would seem to me like it's, it's really too bad not to be able to just wait until spring and do it once you really have the background there. But, you know, that's speaking as somebody that, you know, really, yeah, has some training and education in how these things are, quote, "supposed to be done," and I know they're not always done that way in the real world. So I guess I would encourage you to really think about whether this really has to be done now. If it has to be done now, maybe the applicant could provide some reason why that might, you know, make it clear. But otherwise, you know, it really seems like a good idea, but it just seems like it would maybe make more sense to wait until all the pieces really came together. So that's my two cents.
Good.
Questions in the board, we'll start with.
Yeah, I just have one, the question on the, the actual Rousseau property, because I'm seeing that it's not included in the village overlay district, is that correct, based on what you, this?
No, that open area is actually owned by the MBTA, and that was part of the Green Bush Line deals that were struck. So the Rousseau property is actually to the north of that.
Okay. So that, where the school buses are on the photograph?
Correct.
Would not be included?
No, no, it would be.
That's the Rousseau property, right?
Right, that's the Rousseau property. What you're looking at is.
Trying to like.
This is the bottom half.
Oh, this is this right here, okay. I got it. It just looks bigger. All right, okay, that was my, my question. Okay. I certainly am very pro transit-oriented development. I think it makes a lot of sense in this particular location. I actually live in the area, I walk by there many days, so to have something that is more village-oriented, you know, retail on the first floor, apartments up above, I think is a fantastic addition to the area, and it's something that it really needs. So I certainly support the concept, you know, three thousand percent. I do understand where Laura's coming from, although I'm kind of on the fence, I think that, you know, if you've, well, I guess, it would be good to hear maybe eventually what the, the impetus are, why the speed for this, or why not wait for the planning study to come through and have it be at spring town meeting? Maybe that's.
I'll do my best to address that. Clients have been waiting for some time for something to happen in this portion of town. As I mentioned, this was discussed literally at about the time that the village business overlay district was adopted and has been discussed since then. It's been seven, seven years since the adoption of the village business overlay district bylaw. And so, you know, we fully support, you know, and wish we could be in lockstep with everything that the town is doing, but it just felt the need for, for some need to move forward on this. And again, we would support, you know, support, you know, we would support broadening the district if the board thinks that's necessary, if this is not sufficient to really spark development. We view this as sort of the next logical incremental step in the process without perhaps, you know, inviting some of the other problems with, as I mentioned, the MBTA property across the street, Citrate Concrete. You're going to have a whole bunch of different concerns and issues when you address those things. So it's really, it's really a desire to at least, you know, make some forward progress some seven years after the bylaw is adopted. And again, I think the, you've seen one concrete proposal, actually one filing in the Green Bush area here, which I think is strong evidence that this may be a better opportunity for, for the town.
Yeah, I think we've all struggled with, on the board here, the fact that, you know, we can only put the framework in place, but it comes to market conditions and developers that would actually, you know, actually do those types of developments.
I mean, for example, I mean, if we were to wait till, you know, the next town meeting, we'd probably lose two years in the development process here, because by the time it goes to town meeting, I mean, then we'd have to go through the permitting process, we'd lose the next year's construction season, so you probably would be looking, you know, if we, if someone were to come forward with a project, you wouldn't see construction until 2015, if not later here. So by waiting, waiting to the next town meeting, you actually lose a larger period of time than you would think, because, you know, something like this is going to take a fair amount of time to design than to permit with the town.
I want everyone to notice the, the conceptual rendering with no utilities whatsoever. I'm a big fan of the utilities being put underground, but, so, I know it's always a little bit of a sleight of hand there, yes, but.
I will, I will tell you, we had no conversation with the designer about utilities.
Well, no, I, you know, of course, typically architects would never show the utility lines because they, they don't, they're not, they don't look good, so, anyway, I'm a fan of that, but I know that that's just conceptual. So, yeah, I don't have any further questions. I really, like I said, I support the concept completely, it's just a matter of when, but I think this is certainly the right area for it. I think the overlay district and the mixed use and transit-oriented development, you can't, like you said, you can't get much closer to the Green Bush Station, it's exactly, I feel, what that area needs. So I really. So I really do very much support it.
I, I like what I'm hearing. I have one sort of conceptual question, and that is after this is constructed, where am I going to go to buy auto parts?
Well, I mean-
Deliver them to your house.
I mean, there will be retail on the first floor.
I understand.
That's a possibility.
No, that, that would relocate. It's basically a warehouse if you, you know, if you've been in there. It doesn't have to be-
I've been in there quite a bit.
Okay, good.
So I'm also a little cynical about the idea that we need to get this done before the next town meeting. Otherwise, you know, something's going to be lost. And I suspect that if we approve this and it gets approved by the town at the next meeting, that all of a sudden some, some plans, even though you say you don't have anything in mind, something will mystically and magically appear pretty quick. And that might be a really good thing. But I also, you know, I like the idea of doing things right the first time. And, and I like to see things be done in a coherent overall fashion. And so I also am in agreement with the concept of what you're about. I, I'd want to make sure that we don't leave anybody behind. And I am concerned about the idea, if this were approved in this particular area, that somehow or another that might impact adversely on the rest of what could become part of that, that overlay district eventually being considered as well. You know, basically stealing the thunder out of some other, some other campaigns to enlarge the district in that area. But with that said, I like what you're about.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I'd like to ask Laura and I guess you Bill, as, as wiser if not older heads, do you think approving this now, which is absolutely worthy of approval and definitely going in the right direction, but approving this as a small portion of something that I think we'd all like to see expanded, you know, to include more of the Driftway, perhaps down around three A, other areas? In my mind, you can't, you can't expand this enough to potentially increase the tax base for the town derived from commercial properties. So back to my original thought. Does approving this small portion of what we hope will be a larger plan and a larger initiative increase the chances of getting the larger initiative approved or decrease? In other words, are we, by approving this, are we creating a beachhead which will make it easier to expand it? Or are we somehow, somebody said, I guess, stealing the thunder and making it more difficult that, to, to, to approve an expanded situation?
You want me to try to answer that?
Well, I'm going to go for the older part. You can go for the wiser.
Okay. I know I don't want to go for older anymore.
I'll flip you for it.
I think that you don't want these districts to be too big. If they're too big, everything gets spread out and there's no, like, there's no there there, if you know what I mean. I mean, you need, you need a place where you can focus that development.
A confined synergy.
Yes, that beautifully put. The only thing is that, for instance, the MBTA property, I, I don't think I'm telling tales out of school. They've contacted, the MBTA contacted several offices in town to see about appraising the Driftway side of the, the parking lot that's on the harbor side of those two parking lots. They wanted to cut off a piece on the Driftway side and auction it. And we haven't, you know, I haven't heard anything more from them. I don't know how they're, they're progressing with it. You know, I know there were different people at Town Hall who wanted to be right on top of what was going on with that, you know, other than myself. So I don't know if they've had discussions with them. But it really seemed logical that that, you know, that section of the MBTA absolutely should be included in this. And you'd hate to see this get going and then the people who have these properties under this zoning, maybe not wanting the properties across the street to get zoned that way because then that's going to, you know, steal the thunder, so to speak. So I think it really is much, much wiser or, you know, maybe broader thinking to look at this a little more holistically and think about where this area really should be, exactly what should be included. And, you know, from now to April Town Meeting, I mean, we're already almost in November. So, you know, we're not really talking a long time. I mean, I don't know how that translates to two years exactly. I won't, I won't ask. But, but, you know, we're up against the winter now, so it's not a great time for people to be constructing anyway. And I think that, that the building department would probably give permits on something in this area. I don't know for sure, but I'm not sure if they would wait for the Attorney General's approval or if they would just say, well, you know, you're taking a risk and, you know, if it doesn't get approved. But, you know, typically these things all get approved. I mean, all it would be, would be a map change. It's not like you'd be inventing new zoning. So, you know, it wouldn't be a complex kind of thing for them to review. So I think, you know, you might be able to just go in the next day after town meeting and get a billing permit.
Well, we, and, and, and thank you. I mean, first of all, I just want to make clear that the, the study that Laura had mentioned is being done under the auspices of the EDC, the Economic Development Committee. And I just want to make clear, they, they wholeheartedly, and they thought that this was consistent with what they were trying to accomplish in the town. But not knowing what's, you know, going to come out of the report, read it.
But they didn't mention their report at all at the meeting?
Well, they mentioned the study. There was a discussion of the-
But they did vote unanimously to support it.
Right. With respect to the MBTA, I mean, you know, we have no idea how long that's going to take or what's going to transpire. And we did, we did think about that. We think that that property together with Cituate concrete poses a bunch of different concerns, which I think could potentially complicate broadening the, the map towards that side of, of Situate. That's why we made a, something of a tactical decision to try and present something that where you could actually see some, some development within some reasonable period of time. That would be acceptable to the Stockbridge neighborhood and some of the other constituents in the area. And as far as, as construction, the point I was trying to make was that obviously we can't go forward and begin the permitting process until there's a, a change. I mean, if this is passed at special town meeting and there's a project in the works, you know, then you could go forward. I imagine it's going to take a couple, as I said, a couple of months to do design work, go through the special permit process with the planning board. I don't know what additional approvals we may take. And then you theoretically could begin construction next year. But if you're talking about April, April Town Meeting, and then obviously things go into the AG's office, then you go through your design phase, your permitting phase. You're looking for permits, you know, on a best case scenario in the fall. Then you're up against winter conditions and construction. So you're probably not going to see actual construction until the following year. So that was the only point I was trying to, to make, that if we're trying to accomplish something, you know, we don't, we, I guess from our perspective, we say, there's no real detriment to going forward. We don't think that zoning, map change that addresses these eight parcels is going to impede any further changes in the district. And in fact, maybe the beachhead. I mean, if you actually have a nice project that's working well, I mean, that, that, you know, sort of opens up the door and says, hey, listen, look what we've been able to accomplish finally after seven years. It's a good idea now to perhaps expand that so we can build upon that. Some of the problem is we just don't have anything to compare to. Someone's got to go first. We think that this is perhaps a good opportunity to go first.
Has there been a market study done?
We, we have not done a market study.
Because I'm, I'm mindful of the very similar development in Cohasset of three A, which appears to be largely empty after two years or more. Quite nicely done, but not very well received or used.
Substantially, I believe, larger than what we could ever accomplish.
Yes, true, but still not, not tenanted.
Yes, no, I mean, our, our models are what's been accomplished in Cituate Harbor. I mean, Mill Wharf, I mean, those, those, and again, it, it has a lot to do with market timing. We now, we appear to have turned the corner and we seem to have some opportunities in the near term to accomplish things. Again, further delay, who knows what's going to happen in, you know, two, three years.
I guess I, I'd, I'd be more in favor of delaying until Springtown Meeting, very honestly. I, I hear everything you've said. I think it's a great idea, but I can't see a huge disadvantage in, in doing that. And if the market is indeed coming, coming back, then it actually increases the likelihood of success here.
Steve? I, I had to have to say generally, I'm, I'm in great favor of increasing the economic development here. And I think this is a, a great location for it. And what you've shown here, even as a purely conceptual idea, is a very interesting idea. What I, what I would worry about here is that we don't end up with your little box spread out in this, in this, you know, your small little picture there. We don't end up with that. If we have an opportunity to put a business district here together that's a mixed use, that's livable space and retail and all of that, that it ought to be done. What was your term? With cohesive synergy?
However it is, but yeah.
But it ought to be done as, as a broader sort of thought process around how the whole area is going to be built out in terms of, you know, bikeways, walkable areas, even how the architecture might tie in from parcel to parcel. Because obviously you don't own all of the parcels there. And so there, there needs to be some kind of overarching sort of thought about how we're going to make this an appealing business district.
We want the whole to be greater than the sum of the parts.
Correct.
Yeah.
Obviously, you do have design standards in your Village Business Overlay bylaw which defines those things. I mean, candidly, I mean, you know, our, what we see in the, in the near future, they're not going to change the use of the medical office building to our east. That would be very surprising. Obviously, you have development opportunities on our property, on the Rousseau property, the Drew property. The Dunkin' Donuts, as far as I know, is a gold mine. I, I can't imagine that they would want to necessarily change that use, but I say it's for those people. And similarly, I mean, you know, I don't know what could be done at the mall. But I mean, that's why we focused on these areas because we thought-
No, no, I appreciate that. And it, and it may be actually why sort of the thought process about what's across the street is as important as what is right here as well, in that some of these areas may not change. And I, you know, as I look at it, I'm looking at the Rousseau property and the Drew property and looking at how close the Marshes are there. And have we even thought about, you know, the, the new changes in flood zoning and all of that kind of stuff? And we ought to be looking at this to, if we only get one shot at kind of doing this over, we ought to be looking at it as, as strategically and not tactically as possible. And I would be, I would be much more in favor of sort of taking that approach.
Although I'm, I'm struggling with an analogy that I think kind of compares. In the, the software industry, which I work in software, we used to basically take two or three years to develop a product, a release. And we'd plan everything out and you'd have, you know, a year of planning and a year of design, a year of the, the developers actually creating the, the thing. And it was all supposed to be perfect. But then three, three or four years down the line, so much had changed from the time you planned the, the release to when you actually released it. And now we've gone to this whole method called Agile where you're releasing like every month, where you're taking smaller things and trying to get those successes, like you said, a beachhead, like saying, okay, it's incremental. You're doing something because it is so complicated to get this planning perfect. It probably, you know, might take years to do a complete study, to have everything all coordinated. Here is something that we could do incrementally and, you know, get that success and then see as you go forward, continue to add to that. So that's where I'm struggling because I see both sides of it.
One thing I would say to that, Richard, and it's just, in, in real estate, in terms of development, what gets built tends to stay there a long time.
I know. That's why it's an unfair, it's an unfair analogy to some degree. But we've, we've unfortunately all been reprogrammed into thinking about things in much smaller increments and getting things out and successful and getting feedback on those things in a much quicker manner. And so, you know, I'm kind of trying to think about that in this particular case as well. And whether we, if we do a perfect planning study and it's four or five years down the line, not that it would be that far, but to try to get everything coordinated and then you just kind of miss the market to some degree. So, and I, I look at, if we did potentially, let's just say we waited till the April Town Meeting, I don't see this not being included as part of the Village Business Overlay District. I certainly maybe see, like, like Bob was saying, adding additional parcels. But I wouldn't see this ever not being part of it. But I guess the, the question is, how hard is it to go back to town meeting, like you were saying, Eric, and, and ask for another change? Are the people going to go, well, you just asked for the change last, last time?
We're getting a second bite at the apple.
Yeah, that's sort of what I was wondering.
If I can draw a distinction, this is, this is a citizens petition. So it's us coming forward, hopefully with the blessing of the planning board.
Actually, I have to tell you, that's, that's one of the concerns that I have, is that, is that this is a citizens petition. It's being spearheaded by a group of concerned and interested citizens, which means that you're all, quite rightfully so, advocating for your own best economic interest. And I'm concerned about the neighbors across the street getting left out. That's, that's my other, my other concern about this. I, I think the fact that you're moving forward is wonderful. And I think that's the kind of concern citizenry we need to have in town. But I want to make sure we don't leave, you know, no neighbor left behind kind of a thing, I guess, is what I think.
I guess we didn't feel that bad leaving the MBTA behind.
It won't always be the MBTA though.
Actually, that's valuable piece of property on that side of the, you know, particularly if that's part of a business.
I don't dispute that. It's just, you know, we obviously consulted and reached out to all of the property owners that would be affected by this map change. We had no way to, to get any kind of dialogue with the MBTA regarding the future use of that property. So it was practically a nonstarter. I, I don't know, I don't know if the planning board would have a, a better opportunity, but I-
I, I think we, we do have contacts at Town Hall with, with their real estate division. And, and it would be, I think it would be pretty straightforward to get ahold of them.
I mean, I've, I've dealt with RTA, which is their real estate arm. It's, it's a rather opaque organization, at least for a private citizen business person.
I think it's, you know, through connections, for instance, the assessor is friendly with, with their prime real estate person. I mean, there are certain connections that we have at Town Hall that, you know, are maybe different from connections the private sector would have.
No, let's, we've got to keep moving along here.
I actually have a question just for Laura, just theoretically. Like, is, if, if we did say we wanted to wait till April Town Meeting, potentially, I know it's kind of, you can't talk about it because we don't know the study. But I mean, I can only see it going with a larger Business Overlay District. Is that what you sort of potentially envisioned?
I think it'd be a little bit larger. Yeah, I think it'd be a little bit larger. And, you know, I think they're going to look at the environmental issues in selecting which, which parcels to include. And, you know, they may do some tweaking. I mean, I think, I think there are going to be some things that they're going to recommend that are very likely going to be a little bit different from this.
And it may impact the underlying zoning.
Changing the underlying zoning?
Yeah, there may be a recommendation through the study to change the underlying zoning.
To make it business-
Well, we, yeah, we did talk about some of the-
That's the base on which I'm building the overlay on.
Right, it's commercially zoned, just to remind everyone.
Understood.
There are some parcels though that are kind of weird. They're not commercially zoned that are, yeah, that could be looked at a little bit more cohesively.
I, I agree, but again, if I understand correctly, I mean, those are already developed for residential for, for the most part. Riverways is an example whereby I think Riverway is part of the permitting has a mixed use business that's supposed to be constructed at some point in time. But that was done by a special permit. As far as environmental issues, obviously any project that's being proposed is going to have to comply with the Wetlands Protection Act and have to, obviously have to comply with any state building code requirements for construction of the flood plain. So I'm not sure how, how those environmental controls would affect zoning or the identification of properties within, within the district. I mean, that's just, you know, a fact- I mean, that's just, you know, a fact of permitting life.
No, I was just thinking, I'm happy to hear that, you know, that this section of town is, you know, it's primed for some development. I've, you know, been living in town for 15 years now, going, you know, there should be something here, there should be something there, so I was very happy to see with some movement, but I agree, we have to kind of do it in a way that makes sense of that. I would think the MBTA, that process might take a little while to cut that piece out, but back over towards the rotary and everything, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that side is already zoned or we're just looking at adding this part to that part or?
Part of it is. Where actually, where the burger bar and those parcels, that's in the Village Business District now.
Okay.
There is a parcel there where the, I think it's called the Driftway Medical Building, the one that's right off the rotary.
Red brick one?
The Milliken Eye Clinic Building.
That is Donovan's own business.
It's a residential.
So that one's got to be, you know, worked into the equation somehow.
But yeah, most of the, I mean, generally speaking, most of the current Village Business Overlay District is centered around Country Way.
Yeah, rentals and all that over there.
Right, correct.
Ape shop and everything, okay.
Right.
But this takes a logical, because of the accessibility is more of a logical center.
Oh, it certainly is.
Focus point than it is where it currently is now.
Correct. And I think the term gateway was used, which is, that's not, there isn't a better term because I think the Driftway is the gateway to situate that area, off the rotary, having the gateway, having a village center there to be, you know, bring people, instead of maybe, as we've talked about, instead of like strip malls on 3A, I'd much rather see this type of development, so.
The interesting thing here though is as you look at the areas that are proposed, you know, if you sort of take out the gold mine, it's Dunkin' Donuts and the shopping mall behind it, you start cutting that out, you cut out the medical building, you have some limited maybe capacity for the Russo property. You're really just talking about this one parcel.
Yeah, the frontage.
That's all you're really talking about.
The frontage on Driftway isn't going to be very impactful. You know, and you wonder if even you did develop something as attractive as that, you're going to stick it in the middle of, at this point in time, in the middle of a less attractive area and the marketability is going to definitely be impacted negatively.
Right, and you probably need to address things like traffic calming and things like that if you want it to be residential, walkable, mixed use kind of thing. I mean, it's, that's one busy place at times. I mean, just maybe all more reason to get the feedback from the Economic Development Commission and then really think about the whole, the whole plan.
Laura, would we-
And how you might lay it out.
Let me do some housekeeping first. At 8:45, we've got a continuation of the public hearing for flexible open space subdivision on 214 Clap Road. We will continue with this hearing and we will do that probably in 15 or 20 minutes at the most. So if you're waiting for that, it will be delayed by about 15, 20 minutes. Okay? Sorry for that.
Thank you. Laura, is the timing on the Economic Development Committee's report such that we would have it prior to town meeting?
Prior to this town meeting?
Yes.
I don't think it's going to be done. I think there could be a draft.
Okay, that might suffice. Where I'm coming from is that, would we be in a position at town meeting to say that we basically support this citizens petition, however, we would like to see it made part of a more comprehensive plan that's now in front of us by the EDC and we intend to, or our preference would be to have the entire situation come back in the spring? I mean, would that be something we'd actually say on the town meeting floor?
Well, you could certainly say that. You could say, you know, anything that you want.
Well, right, I do understand that.
We'll be right behind you, brother.
I guess what I'm saying is, would that be appropriate?
I think the most appropriate thing is really to decide whether you wholeheartedly support this or not. I mean, I think you need to really-
You can't support it in context.
You can't sort of support it like in concept but not in reality kind of thing. And I think the other part of this that's, that makes it hard, for me anyway, thinking about the whole idea of moving it through right now is that you really need a wide public process when you're talking about something like this. And with a Village Business Overlay District, there were, you know, and we wouldn't necessarily be able to have that between now and Springtown meeting, but you could have some of it. There's no real certainty that people in the community know that this is coming. There have been some proposals that the planning board has seen in the past where public reaction was very negative and very, very strong. And at least if you had a couple of workshop meetings, which I think you could certainly have between now and the spring, you could get the idea out into the paper, you could publicize it, so nobody would be standing there on town meeting floor saying, what is this? You know, where did this come from?
Just as a point of information, I've given interviews for WATD. There was a piece last week, there'll be a piece in the Boston Globe, there'll be a piece in the Ledger, the only one I haven't heard from is actually the Situate Mariner. So we've done some of that because we understand that we can't just show up at town meeting and not educate people. But again, and I don't want to delay this any further, the extensive outreach that was done was because you were proposing village business overlay for the first time in Situate, a rather dramatic zoning change. This is an incremental change, just changing the map. We didn't perceive this as being that dramatic, the need for having workshops to identify, you know, additional parcels to enter into that. So we thought that this is just the next logical step in this incremental process and a step that hopefully actually accomplishes something within some reasonable period of time.
Let me chip in because I'm the last one. Conceptually, I think this is spot on. I think it's what we need to do is to move and the benefits of the overlay center to an area and this looks to be about it. I think, we talk about how many bites you're going to get at the apple. I don't think you get multiple bites at the apple with zoning. You get one, right? And I think we got one with the overlay and I think that if you're going to come back and either add or tweak it, I think you need to have the full complement of what you want to add and what you want to tweak available to be able to do that and do it in one fell swoop. And I would be remiss, at least in my mind, without at least, I'm not sure what the Economic Development Study is going to come out and say, but I suspect that, at least in my own mind, and I sincerely hope that it addresses this area as well as the entire gateway coming into town. So I think, and I'm somewhat unconvinced, no, strike that, I really don't get a sense of the urgency, the need for urgency to do this. I don't think that anything's going to change. Is it going to, would it delay a potential development? It's not linear. If it's a three-month delay, it'd probably delay it maybe eight months at the other end because of the timing in the winter construction on it, but it's not a two-year delay and it's not an onerous delay. Particularly when you'd be looking at something that, in terms of development, would be applicable not only to this area but to the rest of the areas that would be included. So I don't see the need to go running forth just because we've got the good idea. Let me, at this point, open it up. Introduce yourself and tell us what your thoughts are.
Jeff Burns, a member of the advisory committee and liaison to the EDC.
You're Mark's coverage?
Yeah, Mark's coverage.
Got it.
I'm a discourse member and was sent forth to ask a couple of additional questions. Speransky, she'd have been presented to advisory last week. Much like yourselves, we too have been largely in favor of the concept. We're left with a few questions, many of which we've touched upon this evening. We also obviously wanted to hear planning board's opinion on the matter before rendering our own. One point that I'll speak to because it's been raised a few times, I spoke with Chris LaCuna earlier this week and the MEPC presentation is due on November 13th, Tuesday, at the EDC meeting, which I'll be attending as well, at which point we expect to have a greater understanding of exactly what it is, their findings in the smart growth initiative really might amount to and inclusive of this district, is my understanding. A couple of the questions that had come to late during the course of our discussion, the notion of what spot zoning represents and while we have certainly recognized there's a larger than what appeared to be a spot zoning plan here, by virtue of the few of the comments that we heard, you know, Dunkin' Donuts, medical building, a few things probably aren't going to change too much. So what does this ultimately represent and how does that figure into this article specifically? So I'm going to pose that, I guess, in a manner of speaking a question. What does spot zoning for the purpose of the planning board represent and how does this figure into that?
As the one lawyer on the board, I'm not prepared to address that today.
I'm happy to answer it, which is that spot zoning is the singling out of one property for zoning relief receiving disparate treatment. This is purposely proposed so that it does not, would not be faced with a challenge based upon spot zoning.
But nevertheless, the issue has come up and there are concerns related to that concept.
But it is narrowly defined by the courts.
I understand, but again, sometimes, you know, speaking in the public interest, we avoid the very appearance of evil too.
And we think that this does avoid the appearance of spot zoning.
And the follow-up question, and this is one that I think anyone might expect to hear on the floor would be, and I don't know if this is, you know, if this is something that the petitioner would be willing to speak to at this point in time, but the question remains, is there an offer? That's the fundamental, I think that the expectation is the answer is probably yes, and that's okay?
Is there an offer?
An offer to purchase?
An offer to purchase the property?
No.
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay.
That was another. No, no, this is not being motivated by any- I wish there was. -transaction.
We can't handle which is at town meeting.
I know. No, there's no.
Okay, thank you. And that for us is all probably, thank you.
You all set Bobby? Ian?
Anne Birby, Penn Westbrook District. I'm here from EDC and we did vote to support this. There was a discussion, Laura was part of it, and some of it was a concern, but we have to start somewhere. And we feel that it needs to be larger than it is, but this is a start. So you have to begin and have small bites. Yes, we can't swallow this out of whole, but sometimes if you make things too large, then it becomes untenable. So again, EDC voted to support this with hope that eventually there will be more of this mixed use development. And speaking as a member of the social coalition, this is also right along the lines of smart growth. I mean, this is exactly what is needed. I understand the economics, et cetera, of what went on in Cohasset and, you know, who knows? It could have been rents, it could have been any number of things, but the economy is changing for the better. So again, EDC supports this. Thank you.
Okay, we need decision time for the board, we need a motion.
May I ask a question if it's appropriate?
Sure.
At the town meeting, are they going to take the initiative to do something?
Well, yes, sir, that's what I was going to say. I mean, I'm trying to take something back to the client from this exercise. And I realize that the board can't make any commitment, but I mean, is there a desire to come forward at town meeting in the spring with a map change for the Village Business Overlay District in the Green Bush area?
I would desire that.
I don't know if it'll be in the spring, but yes, you know, is the answer to your question, yes.
Get there, yeah.
If we can get from here to there.
And that sort of leads to our concerns, which is, how long do we have to wait? We're not trying to, we have no interest in trying to force the town to do anything it doesn't want to do. It's been a long time coming and we're just trying to figure out a path forward.
And we don't want to delay the landowners from being able to develop their property however they want to, any longer than is necessary, okay? You know, and I think in this particular setting, we're all moving in the same direction and we have the same basic agenda in mind. We just need to make sure this gets done right the first time because we may not get a second crack at it. Laura, you were going to make a comment?
Oh, no, I didn't know we were still having discussion about this, but I just wanted to say procedurally, at some point, you need to take a vote, you know, to recommend or not recommend to town meeting. You don't have to do this tonight, you could continue the public hearing to the night of town meeting and, you know, regroup. I mean, now at least, I think I understand how you feel about this and I could put a motion together. I mean, I had no idea how you were going to come down on this, so.
Well, I wasn't sure either, but I think at this point, I think we owe the petitioners, I think we owe them a vote.
Okay, I think you need to either recommend, not recommend, give whatever reasons and background, you know, you think are appropriate.
Well, my thought, just to let the board know, is like, I would like to recommend this, but at the same time, I'd be willing to say not recommend, but as long as we have the commitment to do something in the spring. Meaning that I don't, as they said, I don't want it to like drag on. I really want us to put our feet to the fire, so to speak, because, you know, I don't want to lose this.
The only concern that I have is the timing. If in effect at 11:13, that's the right date, that's when we get our initial feedback on what the study is. We're looking to, that's become something that we want to integrate with. And if we don't get it till 11:13, you're hard pressed to come back up and do something in spring.
Do you want to put the results of the study on a meeting for discussion in, you know, in the next month or two?
Well, I think it's got to come back throughout EDC. EDC's got to look at it.
They're presenting to the EDC and then they're going to present to the selectmen. I don't think there's money in their budget for another presentation, but we might be able to squeeze money out of our budget somehow or, you know, I mean, I can-
Can we sit in on one of those presentations?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, especially I think the ones at the selectmen, it's going to be interesting to see how they respond.
Right.
Is that scheduled at this point?
It's going to be one of their, I think it's their first meeting in December, which I think is December 10. Yeah, I think it's December 10.
And to get on the Springtown meeting, when does the proposal or the, when does that happen?
When do they open the warrant?
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's going to be an easier process than this one was. I would expect it would be in January.
So a month after the presentation to the board's selectmen?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, you know, some hard work putting something together, but hopefully they have an area identified where they think this district should be expanded to and, you know, we can just go with that. Or we have a couple of meetings and we kind of hash it out, we invite people in from that neighborhood and, you know, or other parts of Green Bush and just have a discussion about it. And come up with, you know, what everyone thinks is the most logical option. But I'm expecting that the report is going to have some concrete recommendations in it. I certainly hope so. You know, the next phase after their presentation of the report was to do a public process. So they weren't thinking in terms of doing something immediately, but they could probably modify that and do some public meetings and a presentation to the planning board instead of, I mean, it would depend on how the EDC wants to use their budget and what their remaining budget is for the project.
Well, I didn't understand that report to be a zoning exercise. I thought it was, and Ms. Burbank can educate me, I thought it was sort of a, how do we develop business, additional business space in the town of Situate? So there's a zoning component to it.
It's supposed to have concrete recommendations for zoning changes.
Okay, correct.
That brings us back to a motion. I think in its simplest form, we either need a yes or a no. And if you have any reservations about it, then it would, that should impact your decision one way or the other.
I'm trying to be wishy-washy, we can't say yes.
Well, you're already there, that's why.
I know, I want to say yes, but with the condition that- I know, I want to say yes, but with the condition that.
How about if I go to the other end of the day?
Okay.
You know, I think the challenge here is that I can see where this.
Karen just showed me we have a draft.
A draft motion?
A draft of what?
A motion.
Oh.
But why?
I thought it was a draft.
I was going to say, I hadn't said anything. That's pretty good.
The ever-efficient Karen has.
Why don't you finish your thoughts?
Well, here's my basic thought, is that I think, you know, it feels to me like we have a piece of an expanded business district here, but there are other elements that we think ought to be included, and we're waiting for the Economic Development Commission to sort of bring that forward. To the extent that we only have sort of one shot at it, then my view is we ought to wait for that one shot. If you think we have more than one shot at it, I would be willing to suggest that we support sort of a sequential, you know, sort of zoning, if you will, or overlay district, with the notion that it will be sequential. But the biggest issue, in my view, is not that we pick a parcel, but that we think about it in a more holistic manner, so that we don't build something in this parcel that ends up sort of defeating the purpose of building the rest of it out. And I don't know how we accomplish that. And I'll look to our esteemed town planner to help us on that, but that's really sort of the crux of my concern about this. I'm not concerned about it being a parcel in the district, I'm more concerned about how the overall parcel, the overall district actually gets developed.
I think Karen may have gotten some of that in her.
Let me try this as a draft motion. Move to close the public hearing and to not support the article because it will extend the village business district along Driftway without the benefit of the market study that the Economic Development Commission commissioned, which will be forthcoming later this fall. A change like this should be widely publicized and discussed before it is brought to town meeting. The study should drive zoning changes in this area rather than an individual property owner. It should drive, rather than an individual property owner. The proposal should be refined per the study and brought to annual town meeting. Is that doing?
How about, at the very end, you add, "In the most expedient manner."
Or in an expedient manner?
Yeah.
Expedicious, either. Yeah, expeditious, meaning fast, as opposed to expedient, meaning.
The use of best efforts.
Efficient, yeah.
I think that gets the message in there, that you basically support the idea.
I didn't hear that.
I think that's the case, and I think that it also gives us an incentive and a sort of goal to make sure this does happen at spring town meeting, and that, you know, we do move this initiative forward in the sort of larger concept as opposed to just in this one spot.
You need to realize that our only objection is that it's premature. That's all.
Okay, so is there a motion, or?
No, I read that as.
A draft.
It's seeing if it caught the elements of what we were thinking.
May I ask, Anne, or Ms. Burbine, about, since you are representing the EDC, was the thought, was the discussion on the EDC that we could take multiple bites of this apple, so to speak? Or was, as we've said, that's what I'm trying to grapple with. Do we have one chance, per se, do you think? Or do we have multiple chances?
That's a good question. And I did email the chair, and he said that, as we, I told you earlier, we had supported this, but also with the idea that we would be going forward with more, that it does need to be expanded. There was a lively discussion about it, and as a former planning board member, I have to tell you, I agree with most of what you're saying. You know, I think that, but because I am on EDC, EDC voted to support this, and that's where I have to stand. As a private citizen, I could maybe jump the verse, but I don't want to do that.
Let's draw this to a close, because we're going to, we have to wrap it up, or we're going to be here all night, waiting for game three.
Yeah, right.
All right, well, I think even, I was still swaying to support the article as it is, but I've been kind of convinced to wait.
Do you buy into the language that I read?
Yes, I would.
Any other thoughts?
The only thing I might strike from that motion is the parenthetic about, rather than a property owner trying to permit it or something like that. I don't think we need that, I think.
The study should drive zoning changes in this area.
Period.
Period.
Yeah.
The proposal will be refined per the study and brought to the annual town meeting in an expedited manner.
Yeah, I would.
That work?
Tony needs to make the motion.
Is that his motion? I'll say that the motion has been made, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thank you for coming.
And we do support, I mean, it's like.
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure we get it right.
It's a great idea.
It's instead of Saturday, instead of Sunday.
And I am grateful to come to South Shore and buy my parts.
But no home delivery yet.
It is now.
Can I say something quickly, though? At town meeting, you know, there usually is, like, with the advisory committee, they say why they didn't support something or not, or they did support something. I mean, there's no reason why we can't stand up as.
Well, that's what I was intending.
And we don't just say, yeah, we're not going to just support it. We want to make sure that we explain why, that we're very much for it.
But we have to give a report.
I expect we'll see it on the warrant.
Okay.
That we'll give a report to the society.
You may not see it on the warrant.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if we do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the biggest job I ever had.
Thank you.
I chewed up most of your time, Deb.
I did too.
I know, I know.
Talk fast.
I have to tell you.
Passing along, no score bottom of the fourth.
No score?
The dimensions of the village overlay business, to include that MBTA property across the street?
Yeah.
When they start bidding that, price is going to just shoot through the roof, I imagine.
Twenty-two-year-old phenom, they've got, really is one.
Which will have the effective range of the property values all through that area.
It is, it's spot zoning.
Yeah, absolutely.
I very much would be.
Too bad we don't have eminent domain power, we just condemn it and develop it as a town.
I think it just.
You need a redevelopment agency to be able to do that.
It's got to be in context.
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be.
That would make an interesting town.
I understand.
We're going to establish redevelopment agency with condemnation, eminent domain power.
There are basic elements.
There was a session at the conference.
As an overall, this is going to be a mixed use development.
I didn't go to that session, but all the materials online, so.
Really?
Zero, zero, fourth inning.
Okay.
Oh, zero, zero.
I was going to ask, but I thought maybe that might.
Okay.
Yeah, we're all on the same page.
I would have thought that you would have brought in the score.
I'm recording it at home, I'll watch it.
We shouldn't tell you, then.
Oh.
That was last week's score.
Right.
Okay, then I apologize for extending your time, but we had a public hearing for Article for Zoning Town Meeting, which we wanted to continue and resolve before you. So it's now time for the continued public hearing with flexible open space, flexible open space special permit definitive subdivision plan, Scenic Road and Public Shade Tree Hearing for Benjamin Studley Farm, 214 Clap Road. Why don't you talk to us about what you've done since our last meeting? I will ask Laura. And one of the things that I want to do is to make sure we've got a public input for this, so we'll see, make sure that we've got plenty of time for that.
Okay. And for the record, Matthew Watzke for the applicant. I just wanted to make sure, did you just open the hearing on the scenic road permit as well as the special permit?
I thought we had opened it and this could be continued?
We had to amend it.
I'm sorry?
We had to advertise for two additional trees, so that's opening tonight.
Okay.
The public hearing, notice on that.
We can.
Do you want to read that?
I have the main file.
It's missing.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Did you see the letter from Mr. Nylan dated 10/24?
Letter from Mr. Nylan? No.
No.
No, we got that about 5:30, and neither one of us was in the office, so. It's just the top page that you need to.
I was going to hand it down to the specialized.
Oh, I can read it.
Specialized reader.
Okay, so this is notice of public hearing on Thursday, October 24, 2013, at 9:20 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room, Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate. The planning board will conduct the following public hearing in connection with proposed development of property located at 214 Thomas Clap Road to divide the property into nine buildable lots as shown on applications for a definitive subdivision plan and flexible open space development special permit submitted by Fern Properties LLC. Number one, Scenic Road, Public Shade Tree Hearing. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C, the Scenic Road Act, and MGL Chapter 87, Section 3, Public Shade Trees, the planning board, in conjunction with the tree warden, will conduct a public hearing. The subject of the hearing is the removal of the following trees in addition to those previously advertised, in connection with the construction of a proposed flexible open space definitive subdivision consisting of nine lots, two trees, one six-inch black cherry, and one 12-inch cedar. No stone walls are proposed to be removed. The parcel is identified on the assessor's map as map block lot 18-1-2. Plans are available for review in the planning board office, Town Hall, during normal business hours. Abutters and other interested parties are invited to attend the public hearing. William Limbacher, Chairman, Situate Planning Board, posted October 3, 2013.
Legal requirements out of the way.
Here we go. Well, so we're, it's, all of the hearings are officially open. When we finished up at the last session with the planning board, there were a couple of things that were anticipated to come into the record. One was a letter from the Conservation Commission's consultant, Steve Ives, dealing with the Burnell Pool wildlife habitat issues, and then we were anticipating some comments on the landscape plan and the scenic road permit. I understand that Mr. Ives has actually provided the Conservation Commission with his letter report. I've not seen it yet. I think it got handed to one of our team this evening as we walked in the hall, so. But as far as I know, it's not actually been distributed to the planning board members, and we don't have any response yet from the Conservation Commission, so my suggestion is that we sort of put that issue to the side, and we'll deal with it at the continued meeting after the Conservation Commission has had a chance to consider Mr. Ives's comments at his meeting on Monday.
Just one comment, I don't think CONCOM, the commission, has seen it either.
They haven't seen it yet. It only just arrived, and they haven't had a meeting yet, so they have not seen it.
Agreed.
So I figure, I don't even know, frankly, precisely what he wrote, but let's just deal with that at the next meeting. So, moving on, the comments regarding landscaping issues and the scenic road permit. I know that we've received some comments from town officials. I think what I'm going to do is hand off to Deb to just go through the details of that and take you through the plan in great detail, to point out the landscaping features that are proposed and that are shown on the plan. And then, actually, before you get into that for the scenic, for the special permit, why don't you focus on the scenic road, the scenic road permit issues first? Identify the trees that are to be removed and address the comments that we've received on those, because I think that will be.
The comments you're referring to are the memo dated 10/21 from Karen Joseph?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, in a scenic road application, and we have a letter by seventeen that identifies the trees, but briefly, the trees identified are on the northern side of Clap Road in our frontage, within the right-of-way, along the frontage, that need to be removed to install the proposed roadway entrance. I believe that Mike Green has gone out and reviewed the initial trees, as well as the two additional trees that were flagged out there, have identified that they are being choked off by vines and poison ivy, and has agreed that the removal of them is acceptable. He just, there is another note, I believe he, I don't know the date of his note into the record to the planning board, but Karen has summarized it here in her letter as well, that she would like to have these trees replaced with replacement trees, and that we coordinate that with him for supplying those trees. Again, looking at the frontage, you know, we could coordinate with them if there is a place that we could install them along this frontage, or whether or not he had an idea of somewhere else that's more appropriate, and we could bring that with him. As in general, I think we're, the scenic roads and the back fence, he did previously state that there was another tree in conjunction with some of the Clap Road, coordinated across the side of Clap Road, to be a safety concern, and I believe it's removed. I haven't driven by there, but.
He was just going to remove it.
Yep. So that tree was removed. Moving on to the landscaping.
Actually, before you do, do any of the planning board members have questions about the scenic road permit, trees?
Only that you're going to coordinate on the replanting, right?
Yes, yeah. So from what Mike had mentioned and reiterated in Karen's letter, is that he requests to do the planting through the highway department. So we are just to supply the trees, we'll do that and coordinate with him.
Okay.
Moving on. We did supply landscaping plants. Karen was kind enough to redo them. And we'll start off. Some of the comments mentioned here, I think some of them are clerical errors, not errors, but notations that we can add to the plan accordingly, additional notes, clarifying timing for plantings. I think there was some detail with regard, some additional notes. Put that for a second. To clarify, and then we discussed this previously with the garden and the landscaping in the cul-de-sac island, to make sure that it's low for safety purposes, and limiting the sinker mortuary, which is proposed. So we'll add those notes to the plan accordingly. And moving on forward, one of the other comments was to identify trees to be retained. We did have a note on the grading plan to retain a 24-inch tree, which is, right now it's sort of coming out into the lawn area, which now we're converting to the pocket pond. We've also, on the existing plan. We've also, on the existing plans, you'll see a twenty-four and a twenty-six inch tree along the property line. And all three of those trees are planned to be retained, so we'll add an additional note on this landscaping plant to identify those. As for any trees that go on the individual lots, we don't know that as yet, I think we talked about that as well at the last meeting. So focusing on the roadway construction and infrastructure, I believe those are the three main major trees that we will be able to retain within the limits of the work, obviously outside limits, we're mutating all of them. Also, I think one of the other major comments was a discussion that we had with regard to the type of trees. Sean Pappich is proposing red maple, consistent throughout the roadway for street trees. I think the comment was made, and made again, is in hopes of maybe looking for two varieties. I spoke with Sean today and his suggestion would be to supplement or alternate in some form or fashion with maybe a red oak or a native oak tree through there, so I was hoping to maybe get some input as to if that would be.
Those are so messy.
Excuse me?
My, my personal sense is oaks with the dropping, the acorns are just so messy. Scattered all over the street, it's just a mess.
Deer like them.
And then just.
More deer in Situate?
To further, one of the other comments was with regard to screening, again, at the frontage here. We're at, going along with the three existing trees, which are quite large, all twenty, twenty-four inch and higher, along the property line here, and Clap Road, just for clarification, is coming along this frontage here, we're adding another, this is a red oak up at the front here to provide a nice buffer along the property line. I'd like to also add, note that there's a stone wall as well as a stockade fence that is along half of that property line, which are also, you know, currently existing now, so it'll help with any screening buffering, as well as all of the plantings that are shown within that pocket pond. I can go through quite a few of them, there's river birches, tubalows, sycamore, we have white oak and red oak also scattered through up here, all native. We're also adding some additional trees on the opposite side of the entryway, again, for screening and buffer. We're adding some cedars, which is what's out there in the mix out there today.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You just mentioned something about a stone wall and a rail fence. Is that something you're, that exists there?
It's existing, currently existing.
Is there any work that's getting done to it, or is there any continuation that?
It runs along the property line here for a short, and then changed, the kind of, the stone wall kind of falls apart and then there's some stone, stockade fence that continues along that property line. It's not on our property, it's on the others'.
Okay.
But we're, what we're, the goal here is this is the existing driveway location right along that property line. And we're maintaining that as part of the berm within the pocket pond, so it'll be low and seeded, so there'll be grass there as for access around. And that's why we want to utilize those three existing trees to sort of break that up and integrate it into the pocket pond itself for added screening. And then if I click to the next. This is the rear basin. Just to show also that we have several trees. And we have proposed some red oak, it looks like three red oak, and I believe there's holly. Yeah, holly. Which is also for the other two trees that are posted here to kind of give that green evergreen. And then the goal is to have them at the tow slope also, so that when they grow up, they'll buffer that slope along the berm as well as the understory buffer to supplement the existing that's out there now, which runs along that property line.
Would you worry about the root system undermining the basin?
Not at the tow slope, because it continues down, if it was up on the berm, we actually kept going, maybe even a little lower. But it actually works out, I think, better along the tow slope, because if you had them up higher, you're not getting the screening, which is the vegetation on the trees, which is what's, what you'll get with it at the tow slope. I think there is some, we were out here the other day, maybe some openings in the natural buffer that maybe some of these could get pulled in to kind of help, you know, fill in those gaps if they're, we've got some tight trees over here, maybe get shifted a little bit, it's sort of a field thing as you move along. I think those were the major comments from landscaping. I think some of the other comments, again, as I stated, were adding notes to make sure that we limb off the sycamore tree. So we have site clearances at the cul-de-sac, some additional notes for clearing at the site distance at the entrance to make sure that we don't have any trees growing up in the site distance triangle for the entrance. I think that covers everything.
And you're gonna address the plant warranty information on the.
We provide that, we provide that on the upcoming plan set.
We talked about trail locations, you wanna talk about trails?
Sure. This is the plan, we spoke to at our last meeting. Proposed project for the subdivision and then coordinating a public trail on the open space, open space piece, tying it into the Litchfield Trail, which is on the town property. Just to add too, for clarification, the open space is actually surrounded with existing stone walls, which I think is pretty great for the monetization, sort of identifying that property. So we have, there is stone walls along the outer property limits for the open space, there is another comment that we had.
That's a good segue to the question of what happens to that eight acre parcel. And we still haven't gotten real direction from the Conservation Commission about how it would want to have the parcel handled. Understand that the commission is gonna be talking with a member of the selectmen and town council to get some guidance on it. I can tell you that the applicant is, is willing to make the contribution of the parcel in fee to the town, which I assume would go directly to the Conservation Commission under Chapter forty, Section eight C, which puts it permanently into conservation land. But we'll, you know, do this with guidance from the town council on how best to give effect to that.
What's the status and ownership or governance of the surrounding parcels? Do you know, or do we know?
We've heard they're mostly town.
I think most of them are town.
I think they are.
And you would, you would assume that then this contiguous parcel would want to be in the same, placed in the same situation?
Just in terms of the private path that's going through there? What's, I guess I can foresee a conflict here, so I'm just, is this an amenity you wanna create for the, for the owners? Because I can see a public path diverting onto a private path pretty, pretty easily through there. And do people become concerned about people traishing through their properties and stuff?
Oh, I see, there's, the way we, I think we actually included that in the package at our last meeting with you. The way to handle that is, the same way really the trustees of reservations does this on its properties, is that at the property boundary, you just have a very simple discreet sign that says, you know, the path from this point forward is, is on private property and is no longer part of the public land.
So your intent is to provide that as some amenity to the, to the property owners?
And that the private path would only go up to the property boundary of the, of the public parcel. So that there'll be an easement across one of the property owner's lot and then through the drainage lot, so that the people who live within the subdivision have access up into the parcel. That is also actually something in the conversations that we've had with the folks who are helping to manage the conservation land that's back there, is they actually expressed some concern having access from multiple points and preferred to have it focused from the other area. Deb, I don't know if you can show roughly where the parking lot that's proposed, that provides the access into the conservation land?
I believe it's off of Bates Lane right here, in the corner of Litchfield and Bates Lane. And then there is also public access when you get down on Clap Road.
Right, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't really, I think it's great to have public access through there, it's just, you're actually creating a, a potential nuisance for somebody. If the public decides they're going, they're gonna ignore the sound going through there anyway, so that's, I guess, the homeowners will have to deal with that. I don't want that, I, I hope we don't have to have the town police deal with it.
The town squirrels out there on patrol.
And probably on the trail system maps, it just show the thicker line anyway, it wouldn't even show that, the other line, so.
It might be good to make sure that.
Thank you, Deb. Laura, any comments?
Yeah, I guess, starting with the landscaping, and I wanna thank Karen for her nice report on the landscaping.
Here, here.
It's great to get that. One of the things that was mentioned, I think we mentioned it in the report, and it was also mentioned by some, you know, by the abutter in the office as a concern. And, you know, looking at, at the number of plants, I think that there really is, is a bit of a concern there. On the side of the detention basin, on that south side, when you really look at the plants on the plan, they're somewhat sparse. The canopy looks, looks big, but that won't happen until a number of years pass on by and those plants have really grown. So I think there's, you know, the board may want to look at whether there should be a few more shrubs. There's first in that area. The location of the path also around that detention basin was something that, you know, was called out by the abutter. But at the same time, you know, I can kind of see that that wouldn't be the most appealing, you know, location to walk for someone in the development. And I just wondered if there's, you know, been any consideration of any alternatives for the path that's within the development?
Is that intended to serve as a maintenance path too?
It is, it's fifteen feet wide, so it's.
Oh, that's pretty big.
That's the requirement, so, okay. It's not, it's not this, you know, a four foot high berm that's only three feet high at the top that you have to maneuver. You do have a sufficient level of surface area to walk on. And it be grassed.
Yeah, the thought there in terms of locating a different path for the pedestrian accesses, you're required to have the access along the berm for maintenance purposes, why have two separate paths? Take advantage of what you've already created.
Anyway, I guess, yeah, I just had a different, different perspective on it. I think generally, most of the other points, you've, you've addressed, the notes on the plan, the street trees, and replacement of the trees removed from the scenic road, and the plantings by the pocket, by the pocket wetlands, and so on. So that takes care of that, I think, really well. The open space, you know, I'm glad there's some consideration to giving it to the town. Most of the open space for the flexible open space developments has gone to the town. I noticed that on a development in this general neighborhood, that for some reason it did go to a homeowners association, and I don't think there was ever the restriction that there was supposed to be. I'm not sure why that happened, but I think that's really the exception, almost all the other ones have gone to the town. The trails look like the trail map I distributed to the board, I got it from Maxwell Trust. I know they had worked with Burke going out and looking at where those trails should be. There're gonna be some additional trails in, you know, this other subdivision that there was a large amount of open space purchased by the town further up Bates Lane, which are all gonna be kind of coming into existence at once. So that'll be a really nice network on that side of Bates Lane. The school bus stop, I think there needs to be a little bit more information obtained from the school department. I can tell you who to contact if you want. I have read the, the Steve Ivis report, but I, I know it's still a little bit kind of in a draft situation, so I know it wasn't really, you know, it's not really gonna be something we talk about tonight. And, you know, we can go, go there maybe in, in a minute. The erosion control, we did want the SWIP and the construction phase, best management plan, operation and maintenance plan. So hopefully we can get copies of those, I don't think we have copies of that.
The SWIP typically doesn't get prepared until.
Until construction starts.
A month before construction, so we're happy to provide that.
Just as long as it's on the list somewhere. Okay.
That would be something that we'd expect typically to be a condition, to submit it before construction.
And I don't know if, Patrick's still here, I don't know if Patrick wants to say anything about that Eastern Boxville report? Or do you wanna wait until the?
I think it's appropriate to wait till you guys accept that report, and then we can go from there.
It looked like there could be some conditions coming out of that, but, you know.
We'll see.
We'll see. And I think honestly, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's been a fairly long process getting to this point, but I think a lot of progress has been made, there was a lot of responsiveness on the drainage. It looks like the open space is moving in a positive direction. So I think that what makes sense at this point is to wait for the Conservation Commission to, they received it to really digest this report and see what the outcome of that is, and they're meeting on the twenty. So, so I guess we would, you know, have more information at the next meeting.
And I know we just got this letter tonight, but I'm assuming we'll have it, you'll have an opportunity to address it. I mean, it really looks like it's talking specifically about the detention basin and sort of the nature.
I don't think, I think they just got the letter.
Yeah, I just, I gave it, I gave it to them, but.
Oh, I apologize then, I thought you had it.
I think. Referring to the letter from Mr. Nylan?
Yes, and they came in, I think there's a couple of things, one is the discussion that you guys have apparently had with him outside of the planning board, which I think that's where that should stay.
Yes, I, there have been some discussions with him, and it might be.
He's talking specifically about drain, handling his property, I guess.
There have been discussions with Mr. Nylan, and where those actually lead is not yet determined. I consider that strictly a private, party to private party discussion, it should be kept completely separate from a, from a.
But it does raise a question about, and I think, at least in my mind, they've been removed, they've already been discussed, and that is movement of the basin and eliminating of the pipe that comes down from the circle, the rotary. of the pipe that comes down from the circle, the rotary turnabout, he talks about that, I think-
He's talking about rerouting some of that water down the street.
But I think we've already talked through that.
Yeah.
Across the snow property, yeah.
We've talked through that in great detail.
It works better on paper than it does from an engineering standpoint?
Yeah, and we've gotten the Bealton Thomas report that concludes that the drainage design at this point complies with all of the board's requirements, and there's no further comment. So honestly, we thought that any further consideration of revisions for the drainage design were already passed.
There was another letter, another email that I'm not sure that the applicants got because we just got that today.
It was this morning, yeah.
It came in through the new website email forwarding, where apparently residents can forward email through the website.
Yep.
And it was also to do with drainage, and I'll make sure that-
Yeah, we'll get a copy of that, that was the one I got.
Yeah, I saw that one, too.
Can we go a sec?
Yeah, I'm all set, thanks.
Let's open it up in the public, anybody from the public have a comment, question, statement? Ruffle, quiet, send.
Realizing that we'll have another several, well, I don't know how many, but we'll have more chances for the public to comment.
The ones that have come in are the one that, we came in the, from the, the butter and then as well as the Nyman letter, I think are the two, two of the latest, the latest documents.
Deb, I have a quick question, if I may. You just had mentioned on the planting plan, the stormwater pocket wetland basin, that on the left there, you know, you were talking about the existing trees?
Yes.
And the existing driveway, is that just to the right of those trees, those three existing trees?
The first two-
The first two, so it goes in between it?
Right, those two are basically just on our property, but just inside the property line.
Right.
We have the driveway, and as you move up, this large, this one is on the other side of the driveway.
That's on the other side.
So that's why we sort of created that berm within the pocket wetlands to kind of keep the, so we don't have to make the-
Keep me out of trouble. Okay, all right. I just, yeah, I was trying to figure out from this plan, like, exactly where that, the existing driveway was, because you were saying it was going to be planted, so.
If you look at the grading plan or the existing-
Stormwater.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No public comment, no one wants to speak? Either warn them down, or we're running very late and they prefer to watch baseball. Where we are, we're basically waiting for predominantly the Concom report, acceptance of the Concom report. Once we've got that, then I think we go through the process of confirming the conventional density plan, then coming back once we've got that, then come back up, and then doing the conditionings on the, on the plan, which has included all the comments from the engineer, the boards, and so forth. Okay. Now, realistically, when can we do that?
Realistically, probably Tuesday, November twenty-sixth at nine o'clock.
Do we decide not to do it on the fourteenth?
Well, we're trying to, we have, we've continued the public hearing to seven thirty, and we were trying to allot one and a half to two hours for that, because that's how long it would take to give that one justice.
Okay, so that would be-
That one will not see two thousand and fourteen.
That's okay. Okay, so that means-
Sounds a little ruthless.
Yeah, really.
Okay, I guess the question is, if we're doing that one on the fourteenth, then do we expect, okay, we're expecting to do, have we advertised Fifty Country Way yet?
No, hasn't been advertised.
Okay, on the twenty-sixth, then we'd have Fifty Country Way, and we'd have this, and we haven't advertised Fifty Country Way yet, so we can put them in whatever order you want.
When do we put these people first, and then Country Way?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
That's, that's the Thanksgiving Tuesday, right?
Thanksgiving Tuesday, yeah.
I won't be here, then.
Okay.
We're going to give you an opportunity to catch up on YouTube. Cool?
Okay, I don't think that's going to be a problem. Do you guys think that's going to be a problem?
If Mr. Mercer's not able to attend?
Yeah.
It could be a blessing.
The office is a problem, isn't it?
He's trying to think how to be polite.
Well, under, I don't think you've missed any other hearings.
No.
Under the Mullen rule, you're able to familiarize yourself with what was discussed at the meeting, and then have yourself still eligible to vote.
Sit down in my parents' house and bore my dad to tears by watching the meeting, and he'll enjoy it.
Just think of it as an alternative to football. Is there one?
No, on Thanksgiving, yeah.
Oh.
And just so everybody knows, the meeting on December fifth, which is the next meeting, is really jammed. So the meeting after that is December nineteenth.
Well, are we anticipating on the twenty-sixth to actually have a draft set of conditions and findings prepared for the planning board to consider? Or is it, are you looking at it simply as a last hearing that you would then close and only just begin your deliberations?
My expectation, and keep me honest, because you're the one that's doing it, is that we would have findings of fact and drift, the initial draft conditions?
We could, the only thing I just want to tell you all, and there's no reason we couldn't do this all, but this is, now I'm glad that I did read the Steve Ibis report, there are some new pieces of information in there that you haven't really talked about, that, you know, both the public may be interested in, and you may be interested in, so you have to have a little bit of discussion about that.
Okay.
So.
Are you suggesting that's an entire meeting?
Well, I don't know if it's an entire meeting, but I would say it's maybe a half hour, forty-five minutes, which takes you to about, you know, if we start right at seven thirty, that takes you to about eight fifteen or so, and then about another forty-five minutes for the findings and the conditions. But I'm going to be giving you conditions out of that report, which you haven't even discussed yet. So if you're okay with that, I don't have a problem with it, but I just want to be sure that you know that.
Would we see those via email prior to the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I mean, I'll send you my report like I always do, and there'll be a summary of what happened at Concom, and also the report attached to it.
Well, we could probably attempt to deal with it that way, I would think.
I think that would be the way to do it.
Okay, okay.
Because I think that-
I guess that's-
Because it would be my intent to go as far as we can possibly go that night, in terms of what we need to do.
This is December fifth, right?
Yeah, that night's like, gone.
Okay.
I think, I mean, because this is, this is a whole new subdivision, this will probably go like an hour and a half, so it'll be like nine thirty before there's, you know-
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because I told you I'm not going to be available that particular date.
Oh, okay, no, Richard, okay. Okay, that's great.
Let's finalize this before we lose somebody else.
Bill, I have one question from Pat. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Pat, the orders of condition that the Conservation Commission will issue for this and any other project, those don't get issued until the final construction documents are created, right?
I think we look at it as, you know, the compliance with the protection act, and we're trying to coordinate things, but I think you mean around stormwater and road construction?
Well, yeah, I mean, all of the things that we've talked about, erosion control during construction, all of those types of things.
Right, we're hoping to address all the remaining questions on stormwater, road construction, detention basins on Monday night.
Oh, okay.
And summarize, and then we have two weeks to put the conditions together, and we run them by the applicant and run them by you guys.
Okay, all right, so that's in hand by the time we deal with this.
Yeah, we're looking at, sure, sure, okay, fine, I didn't know if they needed to advance to contract documents, so to speak, or maybe they are, you know, at this point, but that's
good, I'm glad to hear that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, when the board has provided a draft set of the findings and conditions, you've had an opportunity to digest them a bit, sort of internally, can a draft be provided for us to review so that we're not walking in completely cold on November twenty-sixth, do they actually have an opportunity to look at this before you start deliberating?
Sure?
Yeah.
Sure.
You're not going to get them before the board, but you-
No, I wouldn't expect them before.
And you probably won't get them concurrent with the board, but you will get them prior to the meeting.
That's fine, thank you.
I'll be personally standing by the mailbox out by the front door.
We'll hand them to you as you're coming in.
We try to be better than some of the date and the information that's provided to us, to be timely, so.
I can only read just so fast, so I wouldn't want to take up the entire, the entire meeting on the twenty-sixth with me reading the conditions, it's not a productive year.
Okay, so we're going to look to continue to?
November twenty-sixth at seven thirty.
Okay, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space special permit, and scenic road public shade tree hearing for Benjamin Studley Farm, a flexible open space definitive subdivision at two fourteen Clap Road until November twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen, at seven thirty P.M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Cardinals are up one nothing.
We've got a form A here, do you, are you going to be able to handle that, see enough for about a month?
Got to get to this guy, got to get to this guy.
Are you able to handle?
Possibly.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Mittsong said three hits.
You're welcome.
Two hits. Cardinals said three, so, not a high.
Other pitchers doing, yeah.
Cardinals now have four hits.
Yeah, you know, they've given the complexity. They've done a great job, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
If we don't, if we don't play quite enough.
This is all two fourteen.
All clap.
Clap, yeah. Just try to keep it all in one pile.
They might notice you're getting longer and longer.
There's Curtis.
Borrow mine, can you?
We have a form A.
We've got two things that we need to do.
We've done accounting a minute, so-
We need the form A, and we need to take care of Country Way for a minute.
He's going to deal with Country Way.
One of the requirements is required in architectural state law.
It's what?
We'll get to it in a minute. Okay, next item on the agenda is form A plan for forty Curtis Street. I assume that's what you're here for?
This is a-
We're going to continue that until-
Come on. This is a rather straightforward form A plan, the property is the Blanchard Farm property, there's an existing house at forty Curtis Street, the property itself was a little over eight and a half acres, and what we've proposed is to subdivide out Lot A as you see it, this is in the twenty thousand square foot zone, this is a fifty foot frontage lot, and to be qualified as a fifty foot frontage lot requires twice the land area, which it does, it has forty thousand one hundred square feet, Lot A, its frontage is fifty point zero eight feet on Country Way, Country Way is an acceptable road to the town. This lot was before the Zoning Board of Appeals, the zoning board has issued a special permit for this lot, sorry, they voted to issue a special permit, it hasn't been issued yet, but we're here to create it, so.
Upland, all upland?
All upland, we've been before conservation, they have confirmed that.
Laura?
It's got double the acreage that's required, it's been approved by the zoning board, it's basically good to go and can be endorsed, so.
Do we have a motion from the board?
So moved.
All right, to be more formal. I move to endorse as approval, under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land forty Curtis Street, land off Country Way, Citrus, Massachusetts, prepared by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated for applicant Blanchard Farms LLC dated October fifteenth, twenty thirteen, as the division of land is not a subdivision because each lot on the plan has access and frontage on public ways as required by the zoning bylaw, with the fifty foot frontage special permit voted by the Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals on October seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, for Lot A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
It was easy.
Okay, next item on the agenda, town planning reports.
Okay, I have a little handout, just to have it easier, because there's a lot of stuff that I have to record tonight. The first item I hear, actually, I was already talking to you about, this development called The Globe, which is, you were on the board when that was approved, yeah, Bill and Bob and I were on the board when that was, Bill and Bob were on the board, and I was early on it.
You were early on.
It's a big piece of open space, I think it's approximately twenty acres that the town purchased, and the Hennessy family sold, and they are developing a nice trail system within that property, they are going to be coming back to the board because originally they were supposed to have the trails go through the homeowners' association open space, and they don't want to do that, probably for some of the same reasons that this applicant didn't, you know, their liability issues, and, you know, just a whole variety of issues. So they will be coming back into the planning board, sometimes, see what we talk to you about that.
Is there a thought that they would just convey that, that land from their homeowners' association to the town, which would probably resolve all those issues?
You know, I, I don't think so. And I'm not sure, it has wetlands, I'm not sure where the wetlands are located relative to the connection to the other open space, yeah, somebody has to kind of take a look at it.
Oh, this is, the actual trail system is not going into the open space owned by the homeowners' association?
Not the homeowners, no, this is the open space they sold to the town, they sold about twenty acres to the town.
No, no, that, yeah, that, yeah, I'm just reading your note here.
Yeah, no, it's not, I think it's about another, maybe, eight or ten acres that are for the homeowners, and that will happen to the town.
And there are no trails there, yeah, that's what I said, yeah, okay.
That's right, yeah, you're right on.
Yeah.
So, you know, there'll definitely be an opportunity to talk to them about that when they come in, in fact, they've got to ask your permission to do that, because that's a change from the way it was originally set up. The Doherty case, which is the one involving the floodplain special permit, is now scheduled for the State's Agreed Court for January, if anybody wants to go, I think I've been telling you.
Is it definitively?
No, it's apparently a floating-
Floating date.
-date situation.
Will that be in Boston, or will, because I know sometimes they sit elsewhere?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
At the Adams Courthouse there.
Okay, that's good to know, I had assumed they would be in Boston, but I didn't know how they operate.
I didn't know, they moved, they moved it around.
I believe they do, I may have this-
They've all been downtown, so.
Say again?
The ones I've been to have all been downtown.
That's why I'm asking, is I assume it's going to be there, but I know sometimes they've held them elsewhere.
I don't know, I'm sure when they get that date, they'll get the actual location, so.
They won't be, I'm the minority opinion.
Oh, gosh. Well, you can go.
Oral argument is nothing but boring.
Oh, really? Well.
The fun parts of the paper.
Yeah. Bealton Thomas, one of our three consulting engineers, reached kind of a, abandoned- the road with the contract form that the town uses. We tried to get some changes in the contract to accommodate them, and it just was not, it just wasn't something that could be done, so.
And it was an issue related to their, their E and O carrier? Didn't like, didn't like the language?
That was part of it. The other part was that the language in that contract refers to a contractor, like a purveyor of, you know, goods and services, and they felt that they really should have, you know, some different language that was really more applicable to consultants. But I think that was more kind of an aesthetic issue, and the real issue is the liability insurance. So that's unfortunate, but that's the way it goes.
Is this something that's gonna affect others?
You know, I don't know, I think if it affects anybody else, that maybe Bill and I need to have a sit-down with Patricia, because I think that we just need to kind of meet, make a meeting of the minds about why this is important, even though this form is, is a really good one, it's been useful for years, but maybe the situation with professional liability insurance has evolved, and it's not.
You, you've heard the. That would not surprise me.
You've heard the old story, haven't you, about the, the, the young married couple that gets married and the wife makes the roast beef for her husband and cuts the end off of it, and the husband says, "Why did you do that?" She says, "I don't know, my mom always did that." So she goes to her mom and says, "Why did you do that? I don't know, grandma always did that." They go to grandma, "Why did you do that?" "'Cause my roasting pan was too small."
Yeah.
You know, that, that may be the kind of situation we're in.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll see.
Need to get a bigger roasting pan?
I, I would think. Every, every town has, has consultants that do this kind of work for it. You'd think there would be a model contract.
Yeah, I, I'm.
By the A G's office and just everybody.
That would be, my next question is, what's the driving force, who is the driving force behind this language? Is just simply it's been here forever?
It hasn't been here forever, but it's, it's here now.
Okay. And, and is our town?
I think we'll sit down and work with that.
Okay, our town council, though, has signed off on it and said this is, this needs, or is just?
I'm sure town council's signed off on it.
But I think there's more, more to it than just.
Yes, it must have, or nice to have.
Yeah.
Anyhow, so, kind of concurrent with that, the consultants are hired on a three-year contract, and the three-year contract is basically up as of September, so we should go out and do an R F Q or R F P for those consultants again. And I think that this time it may involve other boards in town, because now we're starting to share with conservation, we're doing a lot of sharing with zoning board for the forty Bs, they're using, you know, the planning board consulting engineers. So it's kind of a broad group of people that's involved, and somehow we'll work out a process for selecting them that'll probably involve more than just the planning board, but.
Don't let the process slow down, getting somebody else on board, though.
Oh, no, well, right now, you're still using John Chiesia and Emily, and I think they're quite happy to have a little more work, you know, for the time being. But having three was, was really good, and they were all quite different. I, I thought it was a good number. So anyway, so you'll see that, you know, you'll see a draft in the next, you know, probably by the next meeting. Then fifty Countryway, we received the application for the mixed-use development that we were talking about a little bit earlier. It has thirty residential units. You know, I told you when that's gonna be on the agenda.
Where is?
This is the one next to Morning Glories?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm anticipating that probably you will want a traffic engineer involved with that review, so.
Yes, ma'am.
It is John Chiesia who's gonna be reviewing that project, and we've already asked him to be thinking about who he wants to coordinate with for the, for the traffic review, and, yeah, so. There's an issue on the architectural plans for that project. It's, it's not like a accessory dwelling, I mean, it's a big thirty unit project, and the, the zoning bylaw allows the planning board to waive the requirement that architectural plans be stamped. The applicant is, is using the services of his son, who is going for a Ph.D. in architecture, but doesn't have the stamp at this, at this point yet, so. I guess you all need to vote, and hopefully you can, we can do that tonight, on whether or not you want to allow him to submit plans without an architect's stamp, you know, for this fairly big project.
Does, does he have an application for an architect, for, for a professional stamp, or is he?
You have to go through a three, four-year internship.
It's a long process.
It's a very long process.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to say no.
Yeah, me too.
PH, Ph.D. in architecture has nothing to do with working in the profession, it's more like a teaching degree.
Right.
Question, what status are the plans? Are these construction documents? I mean, you can't pull a building permit without an architect's stamp.
Right, no, they're, they're not, they're basically sort of concept plans.
So, I guess under those circumstances, Richard, you can kick me under the table, but, you know, it doesn't seem to me that you would absolutely require an architect's stamp. They're not, they're not detailed drawings, they're constant, it's, it's a concept.
Yeah, but you wanna start off on, on the right foot here, though. Yeah.
I don't know if I'd even stamp them, if somebody brought them to me in that's, at that stage.
It's, it's not like a, like a one-sheet concept.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying.
My thoughts are, are these, is that when those plans get stamped, it becomes a warranty on, on the part of the design professional who's stamped them, saying, "If you build these the way I've designed them, and, and according to the plans and specs, it's gonna work."
And there's not enough detail shown on, on these at this stage to warrant you that.
That's where I'm going, I, I don't know if you reached that point.
Well, let's back up, why, why is there a requirement to have an architect's stamp, then?
I think, I think the point of it is that the construction plans are coming out of these plans.
Correct.
When you approve these plans, you're not approving something that is gonna be more or less like what is gonna be built, I mean, you're, you're approving something pretty close to what's actually gonna be built, I mean, otherwise you wouldn't have to have your review.
Yeah, and they're representing a lot of things to us.
But that's simply not the way it works, guys, it isn't.
I think it is.
It's not. You're wrong.
They would redo, yeah.
Well, let, let me ask, let me ask another question of the architects, then, and that's this, am I interrupting?
No, no, we got, we got a conversation on here.
Oh, all right.
I can only tune into one.
Is it gonna be difficult to get an, an architect to stamp the next set of plans if this one doesn't have a stamp?
Well, he already, the, the applicant already told me that there's an architect that they're, they're working with, and it's the same thing as some other professions, you can use somebody else's stamp, you just, you just have to pay for it, because they have to review the plans and put their professional endorsement on it.
Correct.
And that professional liability insurance stands behind it.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and if I were an architect and someone gave me a set of plans and said, "Base your plans on this and put your stamp on it," I would, I might be reluctant, or I might just charge more, I might call my E and O carrier up and say, "I need an extra rider in order to, to buy off on this."
That's all possible.
All I would tell you is that we develop projects in the hundred, well, tens of millions of dollars, and once in a while a hundred million dollars. Those, those drawings do not get stamped until they are complete and ready to go to bid.
Okay, well.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what's the value to having the architecture stamp?
Yeah, if we've been requiring this all along, and now we're saying we can vote to waive it, I, I would say, why, why are we gonna do that? Why would we, why would we sort of arbitrarily do that?
Why don't they bring the plans in, and then you can at least see what we're talking about, whether you feel it.
Yeah, but this is, I think, part of the dilemma is the fact that this is one of the larger projects that we've had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that we've done Jamestown, I think we talked earlier.
I mean, I understand your perspective.
Wasn't Jamestown required to stamp?
You mean, on Riverway?
Riverway, I'm sorry.
I have another one, a different one.
Well, I understand that, too, but, you know, we, we either do it one way or the other, we don't pick and choose.
Well, right, I honestly think that's a, that's a requirement of the, is it part of the zoning bylaw?
Yeah.
That should be reviewed.
Okay, but, but.
But it's law.
It is.
But, but as far as you're concerned, within the standards and practices of, of your industry, it's not a problem.
That, that the plans at this stage would not be stamped?
Yeah.
I think it would be more of a problem if they were stamped.
If they were, okay, then that's something we probably should.
In my opinion.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
That's not what the, that's not what our bylaws would tell you.
Does it make a difference that a school is like a, you know, multi-million dollar project, and this is maybe a little bit less?
It seems to be, to be just the opposite.
I think, I'm, I'm assuming that the reason they had that in the zoning was the fact that they, they wanted you to be working with a professional, someone who knew what they were doing.
Yep.
Just, you know, show schmo off the street.
Maybe has an educational-type degree, but not maybe a, you know, practical type degree?
Well, it's, it's more a question of legal, you know, exposure. I can't stamp these and tell you that if you build them, nothing is, bad is gonna happen. My, my insurance company would not allow me to do that, or, or I'd be taking the liability solely on myself.
That's the reason why I asked you that question the way I did, is because that is the standard of professional negligence.
Right.
You know, is whether or not it meets with the, the standard within the local industry.
Let me just ask you one other question. Would you not want, whether or not these are stamped or not, would you not want somebody who has a stamp available to them, whether or not they use it on this, to be the one doing the plan? Because the eventual plan they're gonna do is gonna come out of this.
Yep.
So you'd want that continuity, I think you'd want someone to know someone had a stamp.
I think, though, if you, I, I could be wrong, because it's been a while since I've looked at this, but I think if you review the requirements and, Neil, Neil would probably know this even better than I, what would really be sufficient would be the stamp of a structural engineer, not an architect.
Yeah, yeah.
Because bas- basically, you wanna make sure that things don't fall down.
Well, so let's go back to what the zoning bylaw requires, okay? It requires a, a stamped set of drawings, and that's what we've required all along, then I, I don't see why we would change that here. I suspect the reason there's a waiver in that is that they contemplated small, very small things that might, might come up as well, as opposed to just large projects.
Yeah, and I think they wanted to allow some leeway.
Right.
For someone with a very small project that didn't wanna.
Well, underneath, I think it's thirty thousand cubic feet, you can build, you can get a building permit without an architect's stamp. I think that's the limit.
Something around that size, yeah.
So that's, you know, that's law. And over that, you do need an architect's stamp, or an engineer's stamp, and that's law also, but that's a building permit. We're not reviewing these for a building permit.
No, I, I know that, I'm just.
In accordance with the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, my idea was just, you know, whoever is gonna be developing the building permit plans out of this, you know, I, you know, it's not the exact language that's in here, but I just sort of wanna know if that person qualified to stamp.
So we're, we're looking at the site plan right now?
By the time it gets to a building permit, and Neil is looking at it, it darn well better have a stamp, or it won't get a permit.
It's seven seventy point five.
Five, on page one-eleven of the new one.
Okay. In the new blue book.
Yeah, in the new blue book, first paragraph. And Laura, do you happen to know where this language came from? Was this something that we did, or is this draft language that's come from everywhere, everywhere in the Commonwealth?
I think this was written by a consultant who wrote this in his wife's.
Seven, seven seventy-five, what did I miss?
Seven, seven zero point five.
Yeah.
Page one-eleven.
But, you know, saying an architect or an, an registered engineer.
Yeah, registered.
Registered professional engineer, and a regi-, okay, land surveyor.
So, Bob, you prefer to see an engineer stamp this part?
Absolutely, or even a surveyor. I mean, they're talking about a site plan.
But you have site plans, I mean, those are, these are gonna be separate, you're gonna have, you have a whole set of site plans.
Okay, all right, so those are the site plans, okay. So what else does this talk about besides site plans?
This is really all about site plans.
Okay, so this is not.
What is this, then?
Well, these are the architectural plans.
Yep.
So I guess you could, you could exempt these because, maybe because it's not a site plan.
Do we even need to see these yet?
I think to see what the buildings are gonna look like.
Well, that's fine, if it's not covered under our application requirements, then.
Maybe, maybe we were reaching a little bit with that.
I think so, I really think the site plan, yes, this perfectly well applies to the site plan, you know, meets, bounds, grading, whatever, property lines, all of that.
And you have all the surveying, right, and all that.
Right, right, but not the buildings themselves. So I think, I think, I think we're.
This is just a conceptual document, probably?
Yeah.[1722.83]